Chair, Vice Chair Smith again.
Yeah, Vice Chair Smith, good.
Yeah, on that road, let's be specific. I know that we put in maintenance. Maintenance is just public agile. We need improvement. That's to really get in there and put culprits in, put magnesium chloride in, gravel it, pave it, whatever, improve it, improve the road. If you just maintenance, it's just a monitor patch. Well, that's one thing I want to mention. And then the law enforcement too. That should be a priority for businesses is if we get economic development in. And then people don't want to invest in businesses if there's no insurance or no guarantee that it'll be protection of their businesses. Thank you, Shanda.
Can you mute your phone, please? Whoever's interrupting our meeting? Okay, so that Peggy, if you would do a quick recap of our federal priorities, and then state and then local. Or let's go to Donovan. Donovan, what did you capture so far as far as federal priorities?
Uh, thank you, Chair. From the note I have from Delegate Brown, the quadrilateral agreement, making that a priority both on the state and federal level. Our brigade was talking about the retention of workforce, but you digress and made that a local priority. From Mr. Smith, Delegate Smith, we have roads, infrastructure, public safety and fire. He also mentioned emergency management. And then from Delegate Carradine, we have the Energy Transition Act in New Mexico, which is impactful on the San Juan area and Navajo Nation. She also recommend or inquired about an Arizona comparable setting that might be something.
Okay, even from our prior discussions, you can get anything from like federal, like the COVID-19.
Oh shit, I'm sorry about that.
Chair, this is Peggy. I sent you the draft, but it didn't. You might want to add to it, but I sent you the priorities. Did you all receive that just now? And I have for the federal and national, there are 15 items that were mentioned. Did you get those?
If you would go through that, if you can go through that, the federal, national.
Okay. Yeah, did you all get those? The email I just sent out to you?
I have it. I have it here. Donovan, did you send it to Donovan too also?
Uh, no, but I can. The federal national is, the first one is water rights develop, water rights and then water development is the first one. First priority, right? And then the second one is hemp production. Using the 2018 Farm Bill. And then the third is business opportunity zones. Fourth is dual taxation. Fifth is, I don't know if you wanted to include the congressional representation, developing the relationship with the state of Colorado. And then six is COVID-19 pandemic, finding way to deal with the new normal. And then seven is COVID-19 vaccine administration to Navajo Nation. Eight is housing dollars homelessness across the Navajo Nation. And then nine is the HARP Act. 10 is the general welfare exclusion support. 11 is the tribal treasury advisory committee. 12 is the CARES Act funding, involvement of tribes in extending the funds, development, refinement of regulations. And 13 is the Navajo Nation Washington Office, refine role of the office. 14 is extending the CARES Act funding. And then 15 is the quadrilateral agreement. And then, um, you want me to go with the states?
No, just if you look at the federal national, number four and number 11 are pretty much are the same. Uh, the tribal treasury advisory council committee and T-TAC. And that deals with dual taxation issues also too. And I believe instead of putting Washington office as a federal, maybe. But what Delegate Elmer Pivay was talking about was our voice at the national level. When it comes to, for example, the CARES Act and the rules, we never, nobody had a voice up there. So I just wanted to bring that out. On the opportunity zone, they call it the economic development opportunity zones. And so AD, you want to bring that out too, Peggy. Committee members, any questions or comments, federal and national?
Uh, Chair, this is Delegate Brown.
Uh, go ahead, Shanda.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm Budget and Finance Committee members. Actually, there's a few things that I forgot to mention. I know when we had our Western Agency caucus, I did mention some of these. I'll go over them again. One of them is the, with the Western Agency Council, we created a, an alliance between Navajo Nation, um, Cofinano County, other counties, other municipalities around NGS and Kanta Peabody Mine. And this, because of the early closure, it impacts a lot. So with a lot, what we're working on is a congressional bill called the Promise Act, which was introduced by Congressman O'Halloran this last term. But now, you know, the new leadership is going in. So that would be a state and a federal priority also is the Promise Act. Basically, what that entails is the funding that was supposed to go up from the federal government to the nations to NGS up to 2044. But they have now, NGS and Kanta Mine has, federal government, we believe, did not adhere or keep their promise. So with the funding that we're requesting, we wanted to open at NGS a possibly a training vocational center. That would be on the Navajo Nation by Page, Arizona. And the other thing would be the two certificates, the water certificate. Um, that is now being held over by SRP. So I, and it's 34, 34,100 acre feet of water as well as being used. So if we can work on that transfer, that would, that's a huge initiative also for the state of Arizona and since the close of NGS. And the other thing at the state level is, I think we as council need to be more involved in the decommissioning of NGS. I know that the smoke, the smoke stacks will be demolished or blown up soon. I think next month is the target date. And then we need to, at some point, if we can take a tour of the facilities and see how we can use some of these buildings, maybe a part of it would be to combat COVID. I don't know if we bring, we make our own factories. So that's a couple of different things that I did not mention for Arizona, the state and federal level. Is to support the, we're called the Colorado Plateau Economic Development Alliance. And it's not just Navajo, it's other counties and municipalities surrounding us. And that would essentially also go for grants. We will be working closely with Navajo people that are employed in Page also. Some of them do hitchhike from Kanta to the Anahouso area to be employed in Page. And that's still going on. And it's not just a few. So we will continue to work on that and I'll give my report to the Navajo Nation. We did adopt our Articles of Incorporation two Fridays ago, or has it been three already? So that's moving forward also with, in that area. And of course, I did hear tourism. We will continue to work on our tourism. And we do have a huge, we do have a lot, we do have millions of dollars that are basically flowing through our area right here. And we need to continue to support as leadership on the tourism to bring dollars because they do come back to the Navajo Nation general coffers as well. So we, and then this is the works of many years through Western Agency Council, tourism and Parks and Recs also. So if that has not been added on there. Yeah, thank you.
Was that Peggy, did you get that from Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Perhaps he can, let's see, for the Colorado Plateau Economic Alliance, is that at the state level? And then the proposed Promise Act that was being proposed by O'Halloran. But the proposed Promise Act that was drafted or was introduced by Tom O'Halloran. That's a federal issue, right?
Hello. Yes, Senator, I mean Congressman O'Halloran, that would be at the federal level, the Promise Act. And the Colorado Plateau Economic Development Alliance is more at the, at the state level. So, and that's because it involves the nation, counties and the city of Page. And then later on, we will be bringing in municipalities surrounding the Navajo Nation. And we're looking at the impacts from NGS and their surrounding communities in that area.
And then I didn't hear the other part of it. Shiarj, can you sound on the other part of it? Are there other things that you're working on that you were, that you mentioned?
Uh, the other one would be NGS, the water certificate. So right now is 30, 34,100 acre feet is what's on the certificate right now. So we need, the Navajo Nation, we need to work on acquiring those.
Oh, that's the water rights, right? That the state of Arizona needs to give over or give to the Navajo Nation because of the NGS closure, is that correct? The 34,000 acre, 1,000 acre feet that was used by NGS.
Uh, yes, that is correct. I can send you some of this information as well through email.
Okay, that'd be great. So does the committee want to, now that we have like about 15 for the federal, national, and then we have three that, that pertain to the three states. The C-19, or actually, C-19 is, COVID-19 is at all three levels, the local, state and federal. Quadrilateral agreement is with the three states. And then the racial issues, the attitudes to improve relationships with border towns need support of Navajo Nation. The border towns need to support Navajo Nation curfews and lockdowns to eliminate slash reduce Navajo people migrating to shop at border towns. Those are, those are three priorities that are shared.
I think, Peggy, don't, don't put, don't put now border towns used to stop Navajo people from migrating because that will have racial repercussions. And just put cooperatively working together to support governmental lockdowns from the tribe, the state and local border towns. But don't put Navajos to stop Navajos from coming in. That doesn't sound like.
Okay.
Chair, can you hear me?
No, we're, we're, Gashina Dach, I'll get over here.
Oh, quite early, early in that Navajo state, we really need isolated facilities. This is pertaining to COVID-19. Because I don't know how long, we all know, we don't know how long this is going to be. We're clear that 19 will be here. This is very dangerous taking life. And we need to save a lot of our own Navajos. We need better isolated facilities. Their facilities definitely needed for the future. So those should be priorities. Questioning COVID-19, there should be merge with that one. Yeah, because a lot of people are saying in one hook gun. And that should, we should help them right there with our people up there in Navajo reservation. I'd like to thank you to Chair, Vice Chair, to him, so for roads need to be a priority like I mentioned. Roads is a really important nature. It's an, I see, we're driving the mud hole up there in Black Mesa, especially between the heart rate depending on, the road should be also a priority. Yeah, everybody, none of that, internal, internal issues that are, just like, Navajo Department of Transportation receive about 55 million a year. And that money should be used all towards to the roads instead of hiring employees using that money by the Department of Navajo Nation Department of Transportation. Yeah, I see. We need to project internal problem with the, so, Chair.
So Peggy, did you get that? It would be a national priority and probably state too. All three, I guess, isolation facilities for patients to recover and quarantine from who are positive COVID-19. So if you add that to the listing from Delegate Yellowhair. Committee members, that's the need to wrap up. We are 20 minutes past our 11 o'clock. And we need to begin our special meeting right away. That would take another several hours. So Peggy, if you would.
Chair, for the local priorities, number six, I had what he mentioned about quarantining sites. Develop a plan for the pandemic, quarantining sites, reducing numbers. You know, addressing the holidays, hardship assistance relief fund, the vaccine to be administered by NDOH. Yeah, I'll just refine this listing. But I just have one final question as we go forward. This isn't going to be the final listing that we give to the Speaker's office. I think I'll probably have to expound a little bit on some of them. And then I'll share it with the committee. Maybe after the meeting that we have today, I'll work on it and then I'll send it out for your reviews, your comments and recommendations, and then we'll send it to the NABI committee. And I believe you'll have that discussion. And I think, I'm not sure how they're doing this at NABI, but they are most likely ask Budget and Finance to present their priorities.
Hi, Peggy. I believe if I heard Donovan correctly, he stated that he would, they're compiling the priorities from each of the committees and then that would go into a legislation. And OLC is ready to get that legislation moving. So it'd be part of a legislation from each of the, from the Navajo Nation, meaning that, what they'll do is they'll probably get the listing. Donovan, correct me. What's the problem that she just asked you instead of trying to explain it?
Uh, thank you, Chair. No, you had it correctly. You were, you were correct. Tomorrow, we'll compile all the priorities together. We'll start legislation construction with OLC. And the date of the special NABI meeting is looking to be December 10th. Speaker Damon also reserved the idea of December 3rd and 4th to have a special meeting or a work session in lieu of. But by December 10th, we'll have the special NABI to approve those priorities.
Okay, thank you. And Peggy, thank you for sitting here with us and going through and taking all the listing for us. And okay, we'll do that. When you get the listing compiled and everything and finish working on the draft, send it to us at the conclusion of our special meeting. And then we'll take a look at it from there again. So with that, committee members, any others otherwise, I'll ask for consensus adjournment of our work session. I believe we had a lot of good input, a lot of good discussion this morning. Peggy?
For the upcoming special meeting, there's a lot of legislations and such. So I'm going to be, that's going to be my priority. But after we get done with the meeting, then I'll work on this, finalizing, refining it, and then I'll send it out. So it may be late this evening before you get it.
I understand. Thank you for that. So committee members, is there, somebody, you need your phone, I can't hear myself. Committee members, is there on our work session agenda? Those are work session, written announcements and adjournment. So that committee members, is there a committee member wishing to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if we wish to adjourn, but.
Okay, Shanda Delegate Nathaniel Brown. There's a motion to adjourn, seconded by Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair. With that, Shanda Delegate Yellowhair to adjourn.
Yes, green.
Vice Chair Smith? Gashina, Delegate Amber Carradine?
Uh, Delegate Amber, Kimus Bar Carradine votes green. Thank you.
Ado Shanda Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
I vote green, yeah.
Ado Shanda Delegate Elmer Pivay?
Oh, green.
We have five in consensus to adjourn the work session at 11:27 a.m. We are hereby adjourned on our work session. With this, committee members, we do have a proposed agenda. And we have three, four, five, six, seven, eight items on our agenda for new business. And possibly a report added to the receiving reports from the Controller's office. So this, we are hereby adjourned on our work session and let's call the work session to order. It is 11:27 a.m. And with that, roll call. Ramona, if you could do a roll call for us?
Chairman, I apologize. Chairman, I'm sorry, Ramona. But we're on this line for, it's been three hours. Do you want us to call back in? Because I think after a certain time, we all get kicked off.
That's, that's exactly what I was waiting for, that friendly voice to remind us. So let's do that. Let's come back at 11:30, right, 11:30 on the, just give this line a little bit of a rest, a breather, and then let's call back in.
Hello Chair Henio, this is Donovan. Uh, you have eleven callers on the line, twelve right now, and few others are calling in.
Okay, thank you Donovan, for monitoring that phone line for us.
Hello, this is the Budget and Finance Committee's special meeting. Has anybody called in yet?
Uh, according to Donovan, there's eleven people on the line, but so far it's just um, two committee members so far.
Okay, thank you. Just FYI Chair, I went ahead and uh, emailed to J.T. Willie since Elmer has a question about the uh, CARES Act funding that DED was allocating to small businesses.
Okay, thank you.
I think somebody needs to mute their phone, please. I'm hearing a door creak.
That's my kitchen door. Uh, Ramo, Ramona, are you on the line?
Yes, I am Chairman.
If you do, a roll call for us?
Roll call for the Budget and Finance Committee of the Navajo Nation Council. Special meeting November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Roll call, uh, and your location, please, uh, Jamie Henio?
I'm present here in the Rema de Mexico, United States of America.
Okay, thank you Chairman. Uh, Raymond Smith Jr.? Raymond Smith Jr.?
Oh, Yate Ben Shandevan, um, here at Sisana, Arizona. State line.
Okay. Thank you Chanelle. Jimmy Yellowhair? Jimmy Yellowhair? Elmer P. Bagay? Elmer P. Bagay? Amber Kinnis Bar Cotty?
Oh, yeah, Delegate Amber Kinnis Bar Cotty is calling in from Sheep Springs, Navajo Nation, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ashadaja. Uh, Nathaniel Brown?
Uh, Dashas Two, Delegate Brown here. I am now in Kanta, Navajo Nation, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sir Chair. Chairman, we have four members present upon roll call. Jimmy Yellowhair and Elmer P. Bagay not answering during the roll call, thank you.
Agashina, Kehlan, thank you for that. We do have a quorum, so let's begin our meeting, our uh, Budget and Finance Committee Special Meeting. And it is now eleven thirty-six. I'll call this meeting to order. And we did roll call invocation at this morning. Got recognizing guests and visiting officials. We do have our two staff members from our, Ms. Peggy Nakley and Ramona Thompson on the line with us. Although, do we have Officer Legislative Counsel on the line?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is. Mr. Chairman, this is Laurine Tapahy. I'm an advocate with the Office of Legislative Counsel. Um, if any questions come up, Ms. Bobrov has instructed me to notify her and she'll get on the line immediately.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you. Um, do we have a Department Justice on the line, Ajwa?
Good morning Chair and committee members, yes, this is Ajwa on the line.
Okay, anybody else from your team on the line besides you?
I do believe Rudy Anaya, also from TFU, is on the line as well.
Good morning, thanks Rudy, TFU, thank you. Thank you, good morning. Do we have Officer, the Controller on the line? Mr. Robert Willie or Ms. Perlingkurt?
Yes, we're here, this is Controller.
Good, good morning. And then, Office of Management and Budget is on uh, uh, shutdown. So I don't think you'll have anybody on the line with us unless if anybody's listening in?
Marty Ashley, with Navajo Tax Commission?
Marty Ashley, with Navajo Tax Commission, thank you for being on the line. Uh, do we have any other, Donovan Handley is also with the Office of Speaker, he's on the line with us. Do we have anybody from the speaker's office on the line?
Good morning, this is Hope.
Good morning, Hope. How are you doing?
I'm well, take care.
Good, good, good to hear you again. And um, we do have a number of uh, agents possibly on the line for Vice Chair Smith. I see a lot of his legislations on the agenda. So they're probably calling in also uh, agents for Delegate Elmer P. Bagay. And then also agents for um, Shenada Delegate Nathaniel Brown. And then also agents for Shenada Delegate Amber Cotty, uh, for their legislations. We do have, I did get a message there, over twenty-nine callers on the line, possibly more right now. Uh, Mr. Handley's watching the lines for us, so thank you, Mr. Handley, for keeping track and also keeping um, those that don't want to mute their phone, um, to mute them, thank you. Let's just move forward and review and adopt our agenda. Uh Peggy, if you read the agenda to the record for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Budget and Finance Committee. Good morning again. This is your proposed agenda for November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, is the special meeting via teleconference. Providing is Jamie Henio Chairperson, Raymond Smith Jr., Vice Chairperson. One, call the meeting to order the roll call, the invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. There are journals for July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, August tenth, twenty-twenty, August eighteen, twenty-twenty, September first, twenty-twenty, September second, twenty-twenty, and October sixth, twenty-twenty. Five, receive reports, none, six, old business, none, new business. A, legislation number zero-two-five-five-dash-twenty, B, legislation number zero-two-five-six-dash-twenty, C, legislation number zero-two-five-seven-dash-twenty, D, legislation number zero-two-five-eight-dash-twenty, E, legislation number zero-two-six-six-dash-twenty, F, legislation number zero-two-six-seven-dash-twenty, G, legislation number zero-two-seven-eight-dash-twenty. Eight, closes the session, written announcements, adjournments. The next regular meeting is December first, twenty-twenty, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that reading. Uh, committee members, is there a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Motion Delegate Cotty?
Second Delegate Brown?
Motion by Shenada Delegate Amber Cotty and second by Shenada Delegate Nathaniel Brown. Uh, committee members, any questions or comments regarding the agenda?
Chairman Henio, this is Vice Chair Smith.
Vice Chair Smith, uh, go ahead, do you have the floor?
Well, thank you Chair. Although the committee members and those that are listening on board with us this morning, good morning. And if I don't say it, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. But back to the agenda, I'd like to make a amendment to the agenda. To add on a report regarding the um, projects like uh, NTUA. Uh, they need a status report on the funding. I'd like to have the Controller uh, provide a report on that so that we can get an understanding where we're at with uh, certain projects uh, pertaining to the uh, CARES money. Um, I know that uh, December fifteenth is approaching quickly and December thirtieth is just around the corner. Like to uh, get an understanding of where that's at, so that'd be my motion for that, Shenada, thank you.
As a motion to amend the agenda to add a report item A on the agenda for the Office of the Controller. A report on the status of the uh, CARES allocation, particularly regarding the um, deadlines. Uh, they mentioned December fifteenth and there are possibly other deadlines too also. So that, committee members, is there a second? Yellowhair? Second by Shenada Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair, uh, to add a report item. Uh, committee members, amendment number one, is there any questions or comments regarding amendment number one?
Uh Chairman Henio, this is Delegate Cotty with a question.
Uh, Agashina, Delegate Amber Cotty?
Uh, thank you Chairman, uh, thank you Vice Chair for the amendment. Um, could I ask that you, um, um, if we could do the report after the legislation? I, I do agree that it's an important report, um, that would be my request for modification, thank you Chair.
Uh, back to uh, Vice Chair Smith, there's a request for modification to add, uh, put the reports at the end with your motion. Uh, item number four on the agenda, which is reports, uh, to see if we can put that, like not item four, but actually item five, reports, to put that after all uh, new business, Vice Chair Smith?
Uh, thank you Chair Henio, also uh, thank you Honorable Cotty uh, for that uh, request on making the reports after the legislation. I'm in agreement with that, I'll be fine with the uh, legislations going forth and then uh, we'll go to the reports, Abia.
Agashina, with that, thank you Vice Chair Smith. Yes, our legislation is, a lot of them are CAP thirty-five eighteen, so we should move forward to that quickly. Uh, Shenada Delegate Yellowhair, Abia here, holding in a second? Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
Hello, Yate, uh, yeah, I'm agree with it, thank you very much, Abia.
Agashina, with that, uh, we do have a amended uh, motion. Is to add item A to item B, uh, reports, which is uh, the CARES Act with the Officer Controller. And then also to put the uh, reports at the end after uh, new business. So that, we do have that amendment, amended, uh, motion. But that, committee members, any other questions or comments? With that, um, just if I may, committee members? I'm sure everybody received this, uh, no, 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 not, not everybody received this email from Dana Barboff regarding our legislation. And um, maybe, um, but let's, well, let's take care of this item first. And I'll kind of elaborate to Vice Chair Smith, so I can make my comments. Um, any other questions or comments on amendment number one? Uh, Dana, I'll call for the question, uh, Shenada Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
I vote green.
Shenada, Ados Shenada, Vice Chair Smith? Green. Ados Shenada Delegate Amber Cotty?
Delegate Amber Kinnis Bar Cotty votes green, thank you.
Okay, Ados Shenada Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Uh, Delegate Brown votes green, yeah.
Ados Shenada Delegate Elmer P. Bagay? Delegate Elmer P. Bagay? Agashina, with that, we have four in favor, uh, zero opposed, Chair not voting. Uh, amendment number one passes. Uh, with this, so, uh, Vice Chair Smith, could you take the gavel for a little bit while I make some uh, comments regarding the agenda?
Agashina Chair, I'll take the gavel. At this point in time, we are back to the main motion. Uh, any uh, committee members, do you want to uh, talk on the main motion?
Uh, this is uh, Chair Henio.
Uh, Chair Henio, you have the floor?
Agashina, this, um, I'm going through my emails, Shenada, Vice Chair Smith, and also my uh, colleagues on the Budget and Finance Committee, Shenada. There's an email that came in from Ms. Dana Barboff last night at eight fourteen PM and the only committee member, it said addressed to Chairs and Vice Chairs. And uh, Vice Chair Smith is listed on this uh, email. And um, if we could get uh, Ms. Barboff on the line, Ms. Tapahy, Tapahy? If you would bring her on the line with us, so we can ask her, I can ask her a question.
I'll, I'll let her know right now. If you can give me just a couple minutes.
Okay.
Um, Chair, this is, this is Ms. Bobrov, I just happened to check back in. So I am on the line.
Okay, thank you, um, Dana. Um, I, I have a question on your email that you sent last evening at eight fourteen PM regarding the DOJ and OPVP question of the validity of the NABI Resolution forty-nine dash two-zero. And uh, is that for public comment or would you, is that for behind the scenes, like executive session, uh, attorney-client issue?
Um, thank you, thank you Chair, I think it would be best uh, to keep that attorney-client privilege. And if you wish to go into executive session sometime today, I can certainly be avail, available and uh, uh, at your direction, which I think I just heard, I will forward that email to the rest of the committee members.
Okay, thank you Dana, um, we do have our reports at the end of our agenda, so uh, with that, uh, Vice Chair Smith, I would like to uh, amendment, motion for amendment number two for an executive session discussion, uh, with our attorney, Ms. Dana Barboff on attorney-client privilege information that we received. And uh, the other committee members will be receiving that very shortly, so that's my amendment, uh, Vice Chair Smith.
Agashina, Chair Henio, go ahead and recognize your um, motion to include amendment two for executive session, that'd be after the reports regarding the uh, Controller. Uh, do I have a second?
Uh, Vice Chair Smith, it's not the Controller, it's uh, um, a discussion with our attorney, Dana Barboff?
Uh, correct, I was just saying after the uh, report from the Controller, we'd go into, we'd go into executive session. Uh, do I have a second?
Delegate Cotty?
We have a second by Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Committee members, any concerns, questions, comments on the amendment two? Committee members, any concerns, questions, comments on the amendment two? There are no questions or concerns, comments on amendment two, I'll call for the question. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes green. Honorable Amber Crotty?
Delegate Amber Kanasbar Crotty votes green, thank you.
Honorable Crotty votes green, Honorable Nathaniel Brown?
Delegate Brown votes green, yep.
Honorable Brown votes green, Honorable Elmer Begay? Honorable Elmer Begay on amendment two, what's your vote? Honorable Chair Henio?
Uh, I vote green.
Honorable Chair Henio votes green, going back. Honorable Elmer Begay on amendment two, what's your vote? Honorable Elmer Begay? Amendment two. We have a vote of one, two, three, four in favor, Vice Chair not voting, no opposition. Amendment two has passed. I will therefore turn the gavel back over to Chair Henio.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Smith, uh, for helping me with, uh, uh, just a motion. Back to the main motion, committee members, we do have two amendments, uh, to the agenda. And, uh, any other questions or comments regarding the agenda? Uh, Dinoya, I'll call for the question on the main motion with two amendments. Adding, uh, one is adding the report to item five A and then also adding the executive session item to the agenda also. But this, the committee members, Shnada Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair.
Uh, Chair Henio, are you asking for the vote on the agenda?
On the main motion, main motion on the agenda.
I, I want to ask a question, Chair, if I, if I may. At the committee level, are we allowed to, uh, recommend a consent agenda?
My, um, you know what, that's, uh, we, with the legislation that we voted on and passed, um, I believe, have we, Peggy, maybe help me out, have we done this, uh, in, uh, at NABE KAT? Or any other delegates? I think we might have done this at NABE, a consent agenda. But maybe, um, Peggy, uh, help us out with this question here?
Chair, um, and members of the Budget and Finance Committee, we have done a consent agenda before. And it was basically just, uh, those items that you feel like could be, uh, um, considered as, as consent agenda items. For instance, like, um, all of the CAP thirty-five eighteen resolutions that have changes on them. You would have to still, uh, do a vote on each one of them, I believe. And these are pretty much already in order, two-five-five, two-five-six, um, two-five-seven, two-five-eight. And that's, uh, and then two-six-seven dash twenty. So those are the CAP thirty-five eighteen changes that you could do of a consent agenda.
Okay, with that, back to, uh, Shnada Delegate Amber Crotty, what's your, um, your wishes on the main motion?
Uh, thank you Chair, if I could make a motion for a consent agenda?
Uh, for which legislations?
Um, Chair, I'm gonna be as brave to add all of the legislations and if committee members want to take one off, then we'll respect that decision, thank you Chair.
Okay, there's a, a motion for a consent agenda, uh, to add legislation two-five-five dash two-zero, two-five-six dash two-zero, uh, two-five-seven dash two-zero, and two-five-eight dash two-zero, two-six-six dash two-zero, two-six-seven dash two-zero, and two-seven-eight dash two-zero. Uh, with that, committee members, there's a motion for a consent agenda. Uh, is there a second, committee members? Committee members, uh, motion for a consent agenda, is there a second?
Yellowhair.
Okay, Vice Shnada Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair. With this, uh, committee members, are there any questions or comments regarding the, uh, consent agenda? And a few, uh, on this consent agenda, legislation two-five-five dash two-zero is, uh, an action relating to resource development and Budget and Finance Committee approving the change in Resolution CAP dash thirty-five dash eighteen for Lupton Chapter by deleting Basketball Court Project, adding a chapter renovation project, adding a road improvement project and changing the funding year from year two to three sponsored by Raymond Smith Junior. Although, uh, legislation two-five-six dash two-zero is an action related to resource and development and Budget and Finance Committee approving a change in Resolution CAP dash thirty-five dash eighteen for Lupton Chapter by deleting the chapter warehouse renovation project, adding a road improvement project and changing the funding year from year two to three, uh, sponsored by Delegate Raymond Smith Junior. Legislation two-five-seven dash two-zero, an action related to the Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committee approving the, uh, project change in Resolution CAP dash thirty-five dash eighteen, approving a change in project description for HOP Chapter, uh, sponsored by Delegate Raymond Smith Junior. Legislation two-five-eight dash two-zero, action related to Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committee approving a project change in Resolution CAP thirty-five dash eighteen, approving a change in project description for Indian Wells Chapter sponsored by Delegate Elmer P. Begay. And then, uh, legislation two-six-six dash two-zero, an action related to Health, Education, Human Services and Budget and Finance Committees approving the fund management plan for the Navajo COVID-nineteen Response Donation Fund sponsored by Jamie Henio, Council Delegate. And then legislation two-six-seven dash two-zero, an action relating to Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committee approving a project change in Resolution CAP thirty-five dash eighteen, approving a change in project funding year and project scope for Chilchimatoa Chapter sponsored by Nathaniel Brown, our Council Delegate. And legislation two-seven-eight dash two-zero, action relating to Law and Order, Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, Health, Education, Human Services and NABE KAT and the Navajo Nation Council amending Title twenty-four, Chapter eleven, Healthy Dine Action Act of two thousand and fourteen, at twenty-four Navajo Nation Council subsection one zero zero one dash two, one zero two four sponsored by, uh, Delegate Amber Crotty, Delegate Mark Freeland, and Delegate Odo. So, uh, that's the, uh, consent agenda, committee members. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Chair Henio, this is Vice Chair Smith.
Uh, Vice Chair Smith, uh, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Shnada, thank you, uh, Budget and Finance Committee members, uh, regarding the consent agenda. I do agree with the consent agenda, however, I got a question, maybe Legislative Council can, uh, enlighten us on this. Chair Henio has a sponsored, uh, legislation zero-two-six-six dash twenty. If we do the consent, I know that the Chair does sign the, uh, committee reports. And I think we're the final authority on behalf of this. Is that, uh, proper? If it's not proper, then I'd like to, uh, remove, uh, zero-two-six-six dash twenty, so that would be the discussion item. I'd just like to have, uh, insight on that, uh, for that purpose, uh, Shnada, thank you.
Vice Chair Smith, I, I think we, we, we are thinking on the same path, I was gonna ask you, ask the committee the same thing too, uh, if we could take that off and that way you could chair that, that legislation. And, uh, there we, there would be no questions. Uh, Dana?
Uh, thank you, I, I think, uh, that was a great, uh, question, a great catch. Uh, and, uh, it's a kind of an ambiguous, uh, question among your rules, so I think that, uh, that taking us the consent agenda is the appropriate, uh, uh, course of action, thank you.
Okay, now, thank you, uh, Vice Chair Smith for bringing that up, and I do agree. So with that, uh, Vice Chair Smith, uh, for bringing that up and we'll, uh, remove that from the consent agenda and hear that separately. With that, committee members, we do have our consent agenda with legislation number two-six-six dash two-zero uh, being heard separately from the consent agenda, any other questions or comments?
Chair, this is Delegate Begay.
Delegate Elmer Begay, Shnada, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll call him again.
Agashina, we are on the main motion on the approving of the agenda. We added two amendments. Amendment number one is to, uh, report five A, uh, for the CARES Act, uh, report, uh, from the Controller's office. And then item, amendment number two, AA, is executive session item. AA, we're adding that to discuss an email from, uh, our Legislative Council. And I receive, I think you might have received that email already, it's a confidential email, attorney-client privilege email that that he, he bond it, you know, and then this is the third amendment on the main motion for the agenda is to do consent agenda to, for all the legislations on their new business. Uh, two-five-five twenty, two-five-six twenty, two-five-seven dash two-zero, two-five-eight dash two-zero, two-six-seven dash two-zero, and two-seven-eight dash two-zero. AD consent agenda, delegate, no motion and second, there you go. Uh, this is where we're at, Shnada Delegate Elmer Begay. Uh, with that, uh, Agashina, any other questions or comments? Uh, Dinoya, I'll call for the question on the, uh, amendment number three on the consent agenda, Shnada Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Uh, yes, uh, Chair, I have a question, um. I have, I would like to remove, um, from the consent agenda, um, legislation zero-two-seven-eight dash twenty. I have an amendment to that, uh, legislation, thank you.
Agashina, therefore hereby two-seven-eight dash two-zero is removed, removed from the consent agenda. So now, on the consent agenda, we have legislation two-five-five dash two-zero, two-five-six dash two-zero, two-five-seven dash two-zero, two-five-eight dash two-zero, two-six-seven dash two-zero. All these, uh, legislations that I named out, um, are CAP thirty-five dash eighteen, uh, changes. Um, committee members, any other questions or comments?
Chair, this is Peggy, I have a question.
Uh, Peggy, go ahead.
Okay, um, I was a little bit confused when I read the, um, legislations that are pertaining to, I believe, it's, uh, the two first ones, the two-five-five and two-five-six. There's, um, different numbers for the roads. One, uh, the, the, uh, Resources and Development Committee corrected, the other one wasn't corrected. And so I'll be conferring with, uh, Office of Legislative Council on that for making sure that Ramona and I, that we get it correct, with what the road number is. And that's, that, I guess it's just more like a comment, just so that it's okay with the committee that we do that for any of those changes, because in, in the, uh, way that the legislation is written, the, um, it refers to a certain number for the road project. But then later on, towards the end, it, it refers to, I don't know if it's just transposing the numbers. There's like, uh, one at the end, or then there's a two at the end, so that's where I was kinda confused. We need to just make that change. Was that clear, I'm sorry?
Okay, with that, uh, committee members. Hey, committee members, there's, um, a comment by our advisor, Ms. Peggy Nakai regarding two-five-five dash two-zero, two-five-six dash two-zero. Any questions or comments regarding that?
Shnada, this is Vice Chair Smith, thank you for, um, bringing that up. Both, uh, legislations zero-two-five-five dash twenty and zero-two-five-six is basically one road, which is ninety-four oh two.
Okay, I just needed that information, so Ramona, it's ninety-four oh two when we write the resolution, we'll just put that number in there, thank you.
Agashina, with that, committee members, any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Uh, motion amendment number three, amendment number three. Uh, Dinoya, I'll call for the questions with, um, five items on the consent agenda. Shnada Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
I vote green.
Agashina, Ados, Shnada, Vice Chair Smith? Green. Ados, Shnada Delegate Amber Crotty?
Delegate Amber Kanasbar Crotty votes green, thank you.
Ados, Shnada Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Uh, Delegate Brown votes green, yep.
Ados, Shnada Delegate Elmer P. Begay? Delegate Elmer P. Begay?
I vote green.
Okay, we have, uh, we have five in favor, zero opposed. Uh, we do have our agenda before us with, uh, three amendments. With this, uh, committee members, we will move forward to item number four, review and adopt the journal. Uh, we have July twenty-four, twenty twenty, August ten, twenty twenty, August eighteen, twenty twenty, September first, twenty twenty, September second, twenty twenty, and October six, twenty twenty, I believe they were emailed to us prior. Is there a motion, committee members?
Uh, this Delegate Brown, all motion to accept the, the journal, the report.
Agashina, Kenos, Shnada, Delegate Nathaniel Brown motions to accept all the journals. And is there a second, committee members?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion, committee members, regarding the journal?
Yellowhair.
Shnada Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair, uh, second to that motion. She have motion and second to accept the journals, any questions or comments, committee members? Uh, Dinoya, I'll for the questions, Shnada Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
Green, Ega.
Agashina, Ados, Shnada, Vice Chair Smith? Green. Ados, Shnada Delegate Amber Crotty?
Delegate Amber Kanasbar Crotty votes green.
Ados, Shnada Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Uh, Delegate Brown votes green, yep.
Ados, Shnada Delegate Elmer P. Begay?
I vote green.
Okay, green, so with this, committee members, we have five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting, we have accepted our journals. With this, uh, we'll move down to item five, receiving reports, which is now at the end, after new business. Old business, we have none, uh, new business, we have a consent agenda, uh, committee members. Uh, committee members, and on the consent agenda, we do have legislation two five five dash two zero, two five six dash two zero, two five seven dash two zero, two five eight dash two zero, and two six seven dash two zero. Is there a motion on this consent, uh, item? Uh, committee members?
Delegate Brown, all motion?
Motion by Shnata, delegate Nathaniel Brown. Is there a second?
Yellowhair?
Okay, Shnata, delegate Jimmy Yellowhair is second to that. Uh, committee members, any questions or comments?
There, I have a question, please. This is Peggy.
Okay, go ahead Peggy.
Um, so, going back, I was gonna do a point of order, but I wasn't sure. Um, so today's, uh, delegate Crotty created the consent agenda by a motion, so that was the amendment three, right?
Yes, amendment number three.
So you voted on the amendment three, which was five to zero. And then, I didn't hear the vote for the agenda, for adopting the agenda, going back. Because that one, uh, Amber and Nathaniel Brown held the motion. We didn't do the vote on, on accepting the agenda.
We did, we did. It was five to zero.
Because it, I thought that was the vote on the consent agenda motion.
No, we did, we did the vote on the consent. That's where Delegate, Elmer Begay came back online. And so the vote was five. Consent items on our agenda. And then second by Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair. He shot at me, Delegate Yellowhair. Yes, I believe he, he holds a second. Any questions or comments on the consent items, committee members? I don't know, yeah, I'll call for the cons, uh, on the consent items. Shnata, Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
I'll vote green.
Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair votes green. Uh, Shnata, Vice Chair Smith?
Green?
Vice Chair Smith votes green. Uh, Shnata, Delegate Amber Crotty?
Delegate Amber, Tina's Bob Crotty votes green. Thank you.
Uh, Delegate Crotty votes green. Uh, Shnata, Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Delegate Brown votes green, yeah.
Okay, Shnata, Delegate Nathaniel Brown votes green. Shnata, Delegate Elmer PBG?
I'll vote green.
Delegate Elmer PBG votes green. So on the consent items, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, they're not voting. Moving on down the line on new business item, we do have, uh, next legislation is two six six dash two zero. Uh, Vice Chair Smith, if you would, uh, help me out and, um, uh, take over the gavel for this legislation?
Agashina, committee members, uh, being, uh, the, uh, consent has been passed. We just want to say thank you for the legislations of two five five twenty, two five six twenty, and two five seven twenty. And the rest that were also on there, uh, two six seven twenty. Appreciate that. Uh, these are the success in projects. And I know I had agents on there, and the agents are free to go. Thank you very much for your support on behalf of these projects at Tean, at the Noado Cemetery. Just wanted to mention that, uh, committee members and those that are listening on board. Uh, Nasi Kato, we have, uh, item E, which is legislation number zero two six six dash twenty. We have that read into the record, uh, Shadah, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, this is a proposed standing committee resolution. It was assigned to Health, Education, and Human Services Committee, then, uh, Budget and Finance Committee. Twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, second year twenty twenty, introduced by Jamie Henio, tracking number zero two six six dash twenty, and action relating to the Health, Education, and Human Services and Budget and Finance Committees, approving the fund management plan for the Navajo COVID-nineteen Response Donation Fund. And this has been electronically read into the record. Um, the, uh, fund management plan, I don't know if you want me to read that, Vice Chair? Um, and then, um, the, uh, Internet public review, there were no comments received. And the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee has due pass with no amendments, no directives, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, Shadah, on legislation zero two six six dash twenty, do I have a motion?
This Delegate Brown, all motion?
Second by Delegate Crotty?
We have a motion by Honorable Brown, and also, uh, Honorable Crotty, second the, uh, motion. Committee members, uh, any questions, concerns on legislation number zero two six six dash twenty?
This is Delegate Crotty with a question.
Okay, thank you, uh, Honorable Crotty. Uh, Chair Henio, you have the floor for, uh, ten minutes on your.
Agashin, can I, Shnata, uh, Vice Chair Smith for, um, um, running this part of the meeting, Ados Shnata, members of the Budget and Finance Committee, two six six dash two zero. AA, uh, it's, uh, proven a fund management plan that we've been talking about for several months now. As, uh, you belong, uh, Navajo Nation has been receiving, uh, monetary donations from different sources. Uh, individuals, companies, uh, giving the Navajo Nation, uh, either money orders or checks, or, I don't know about cash, but in that form of currency. And it has been building up in the, uh, Controller's Office. Miss Perling Kirk has reported to the committee a number of times the balance, um, of this fund management plan. It's been fund management now. And then I believe the last reporting we had, it was over seven million dollars. And I believe that might be the question is, um, how much do we currently have in that, um, pot of money? And so therefore, if, uh, Controller, if you would help me out with this, um, possible question is, uh, how much do we have? Are you on the line, Miss, uh, Controller, Miss Perling Kirk?
Robert Willie? I have that amount, if you'd like. Um, the total dollar amount as of yesterday is eight million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred, uh, two hundred and forty-one dollars and fifteen cents. I can send that report here and give you to the committee office in a few seconds. Thank you.
Okay, uh, one more time, um, somebody that, well, maybe submit their phones, a lot of papers shuffling and something going on. And so if you re- repeat that amount, Mr. Robert Willie?
Okay, so the total amount is eight million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and fifteen cents. And I'll send out the details to the committee in a few seconds.
Okay, so we do have eight point six million dollars currently in the, um, in this, uh, donation account. And in order to spend the money, uh, we, we need to have a fund management plan put in place. And, uh, also, uh, we, Budget and Finance is the final authority on this, um, fund management plan. So once we, uh, accept this resolution and, uh, sign it, and then there'll be, uh, money will be available for uses by the Navajo Nation as far as the monetary donations that were received. So, AD consent, Shnata, I'll go, Vice Chair Smith, we'll floor back to you if there's any other questions.
Agashin, Shnata, on legislation zero two six six dash twenty, um, we have, Honorable Crotty, you have the floor for your question.
Uh, yes, thank you, um, Vice Chair, committee members. Uh, thank you, Chairman Henio, for that updated amount. Uh, I, my question actually would be if your agent is on the line. It looks like, um, the Department of Emergency Management will be administering this fund. And, uh, so I think at this time, I'd like to request, uh, information from the department on how they plan to, uh, utilize this funding to combat, uh, COVID across the Navajo Nation. Uh, thank you, Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Crotty. To be clear with, uh, your request, is that into the EOC, um, Dr. Gil, is that who you're requesting?
Uh, Vice Chair Smith, uh, on Exhibit A, well, I'm not sure, I don't know if HES amended, but on my Exhibit A, uh, it says that it'll be managed by the Department of Emergency Management. So that's my understanding, and that's, uh, Mr. Harland Cleveland. And so I'd like to know, uh, how they plan to utilize, um, these dollars. I understand we're developing the fund management, but I think at this point we should have an idea. Um, so the second part of my question, and the reason why I'm asking is, last week, as delegates, we received a report via email, um, from a, a nonprofit that are assisting the Navajo Nation. And it's not clear then, um, because they're, they're, they're building these tiny infrastructures. So I'm not clear on the role of, of emergency management and what they're doing in their humanitarian efforts. Uh, and then how that compares to what Dr. Gil, Jim, and Hers, uh, HCOC are doing. And, and I just need to be clear about that. Thank you, um, Chair, because this fund management plan does, um, identify the Department of Emergency Management. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Crotty, for that, uh, clarification on emergency management. Is emergency management on board?
Vice Chair Smith, this is Adra from DOJ. Emergency management is not on board, but DOJ has been in communication with him. So if it's okay with you, I can answer or attempt to answer Delegate Crotty's question.
Uh, thank you, uh, DOJ, for that, uh, answer on the, uh, emergency management. At this point in time, I will turn the floor over to you, DOJ, for the question.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith. So Delegate Crotty, according to emergency management, and I would like to start by saying that unfortunately, Mr. Charlie's not available, uh, to join today's meeting, but he is working a community distribution. So that's why he's unable to, to be part of today's BFC session. But he did let DOJ know that his, excuse me, his budget priorities are for supplies, like PPE, um, assistance in the form of food boxes, and also to increase the distribution capacity of, of his outfit. So that, that means transportation equipment and getting additional personnel to ensure that distribution moves smoothly and sort of moves faster. If, if that answers your question, Delegate Crotty. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, answer on the, uh, question that was posed by Honorable Crotty. Committee members, any other questions regarding, uh, legislation zero two six six dash twenty?
Vice Chair Smith, this is Delegate Crotty.
I will recognize, uh, Honorable Crotty. Go ahead with your question.
Uh, yes, Chair, so if I could ask, um, what, uh, budget, uh, some of these budget has to be created? And so as budget and finance, will we see that budget? Can you just help me understand, um, that process once this fund is approved? And what's the next step? Um, because I wasn't, the question wasn't answered if, uh, in their humanitarian work, because I'm trying to make sure there's not duplication of service, especially in, in the communities that I serve, like Northern East Coast. We rarely see services. And I would even say Eastern, I think the New Mexico part, uh, we, we don't see the type of humanitarian or HCOC effort. And so that, that's my concern, um, Chair. So if you could help me understand, uh, when this budget together, what would be that process? Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, uh, Honorable Crotty. Uh, Department of Justice, do you have, uh, an answer since we don't have Mr. Charlie on board to answer these specific questions?
Yes, Vice Chair Smith, if I may.
You have the floor.
Thank you very much. So Delegate Crotty, I apologize for not answering the, the other part of your question. In the draft fund management plan, as it's currently written, the, um, the department is actually to follow a budgeting process. But that budgeting process is to be established by OMB in consultation with DOJ. So there's nothing in the draft fund management plan at the moment that speaks to coming back to BFC to show what the budgeting process is. I will point out, however, that the, the department is required to, to give, um, updates to, or accounting, I guess, to, um, to BFC. So that would happen. And as to the portion of your question about duplication of services, I will point out that the amount that, um, Mr. Willie talked about being in this fund, the eight million dollars, I do believe includes monies that the donors have specified for certain things. So that might present a duplication of service issue. If a donor, for example, has made a hundred thousand dollar donation and wants it specifically for food delivery, then that food, that hundred thousand dollars would be spent on food delivery. And the rest of the fund would also, or a portion of the rest of the fund would also be spent on food delivery. So that might be a duplication of services. But that's because the department has to comply with what the donor has asked for. Um, that's as much information as I have. But my colleague, Erica Parot, is also on the line from DOJ. If she has any additional information, then I would ask the committee if she be allowed to, to share that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, for that answer. Um, Honorable Crotty, you have any other questions, concerns on legislation zero two six six dash twenty?
Uh, yes, thank you, Vice Chair. If I could, uh, I was to say, I'm, I'm, I'd like to, uh, insert language that that budget form, uh, does and is approved by the Finance Committee. Chair, I, I'll need that guidance. Thank you.
Uh, Honorable Crotty, uh, you came in kind of broken up. Could you repeat what your request was? Thank you.
Uh, Chair, I'd like to, um, ask Legislative Council to assist. I'd like language to identify that the budget form be approved by the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Crotty. Is, uh, Legislative Council on board, listening on to request from, uh, Honorable Crotty?
Uh, yes, um, Vice Chair Smith, I, uh, this is Dana. I'm on the line. Um, it will take, uh, a little bit of time to, uh, work on that amendment, but I will get back to you as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Legislative Council. Committee members, going back to committee members, any questions on zero two six six dash twenty? While, uh, Legislative Council is drafting up the amendment for the request on this legislation. Any questions from the committee members?
Uh, Vice Chair, this is Delegate.
Vice Chair, this is Peggy. Can I also speak? Uh, Controller, uh, Rob Willie, uh, has a comment to make on this.
At this point in time, I'm requesting the Leg, uh, the, um, Budget Finance Committee, we'll go back to, uh, Rob, Mr., uh, Willie. We'll go back to Rob, Mr. Willie, when the committee members, I'll turn the floor over to the committee members. Committee members, do you have any questions on this legislation? If not, I'll turn the floor back over to controllers. There are no comments or questions on this legislation. Controller, Mr. Rob Willie, are you onboard?
I guess Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chair, sorry, excuse me. I had some comments to make about the budget process. Part of the problem that we have on the allocation of these funds is the acceptance. If you all recall, there was a legislation back in April, I believe, to expedite the process and the acceptance of these donations. I believe only one of those memos was actually signed by both the President and the Speaker, and that was back in June. I sent another acceptance letter to both the President and Speaker in August, but I never got response on that. I know that prior Chief of Staff LaShanna So is working on getting those signatures, but I'm not sure if she was successful or if anybody has worked on that since. I will be sending out another one updated to the end of this month to see if we can get those also accepted. And the President still needs to accept all the ones that are under $1,000. So that may be a problem when it comes to utilizing these funds also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willie. Committee members, we are the final authority on the Budget Finance Committee for this fund management plan on the COVID-19 Response Donation Fund. That was brought up by Office of Controllers regarding the process. Committee members, any questions regarding this legislation?
Vice Chair Smith, I have a question to Delegate Karati.
Honorable Karati, I'll recognize you. Go ahead, have the floor.
Vice Chair Smith, it's actually, I think it's the report that I heard yesterday at Hess regarding being special hazard duty paid. It sounds like there's different divisions that aren't meeting the deadlines to that internal special hazard duty pay. So my question is, in reviewing this fund management, because I did hear DOJ speaking for their client, and I want, my interpretation was it sounded like personnel as they extend their services. Personal.
Honorable Karati, you're breaking up real bad. FYI.
Yeah. I'm, I'm.
Honorable Karati, you're breaking up real bad. Get your last statement.
Vice Chair, is this any better?
Are you loud and clear now?
Oh, thank you. The second part is, does this fund allow for special duty or hazard pay for those employees who division managers didn't submit their information on time, or to help with the humanitarian? Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Karati, that question would go to, who would you like to have that answer on that question regarding your second?
Vice Chair, not the sponsor, Chairman Henio knows the answer, or if he wants to defer it to someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Karati. I'll turn the floor back over to Honorable Chair Henio. Chair Henio, question to respond to.
But as far as hazard pay, I believe, Mr. Rob Willie, are you able to help me with this answer?
Yes, my friend. Yes, yes.
Sure, I might come to call on the line.
Mr. Willie?
So, may I speak? On Exhibit A, the attached fund management plan under 1000.4, where it says fund management, on Part C, the funding allocation process, number three, it states the fund shall not be used to fund meeting stipends, the department payroll expenses, and other costs budgeted for in the Navajo Nation's annual comprehensive budget. And I believe that hazard pay would fall under payroll expenses, so it won't be used for that. I would look to DOJ to clarify that language.
Honorable Chair Henio, do you want DOJ to chime in on this?
Department of Justice, Adua, you're still on the line with us?
Yes, I am, Chair Henio. Committee members, I would agree with Mr. Willie's assessment that the portion of the fund management plan that he read to you about the fund not being able to use, excuse me, the fund not being used to fund the department's payroll expenses would mean that it could not be used for hazard pay. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Chair Henio. Back to the committee members, hopefully that answered your question, Honorable Karati. Any other questions or concerns on this legislation, committee members? While we're waiting for the amendment.
Vice Chair, this is Dana. Can I address the committee for a moment?
Yes, Legislative Council, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. The amendments, the amendment request was by Delegate Karati. Is that on with the purpose or the structure of how this fund management plan was developed? So to do that amendment will take a big rewrite of the plan. So I am going to need more than the few minutes I originally stated I would need. So I wanted to make the committee aware of that, and I will probably need to consult with the Department of Justice. Thank you, Chair. That was all I wanted to share.
Thank you, Legislative Council, for letting us know the timeframe on this and consulting with the Department of Justice in reference to the amendment requested earlier. Committee members, what's your thought on the timeframe? Should we go into recess and give Legislative Council to draft this up, or we could table this and then come back after the amendment is done and go to the next legislation? It'd be up to the committee members. Leave it up to them, committee members.
Vice Chair Smith, this is Delegate Karati.
Honorable Karati, I'll recognize you. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Smith. If I could ask the sponsoring Delegate Chairman Henio regarding, so it's an amendment to include Budget and Finance Committee, and so I would just want to see if he, what he would want us to do with this legislation while we wait for the amendment. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you for that, Honorable Karati. Turn the floor over to sponsor. Chair Henio, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith. Delegate Amber Karati and the Budget Finance Committee members. I'm open to tabling the legislation, because we do need to have Budget Finance as far as this amendment is concerned. I think it's worth waiting for, and therefore, I'm open to tabling this legislation. Even, I believe, Peggy, we do have a BNF committee meeting next week, right, on December 1st?
Yes, Chair, that's right. December 1st meeting in December.
Can you, somebody beat your phone, you're giving away your personal number, and we will dial it. Okay. With that, committee members, I'm open to tabling this. We do have a committee meeting next week on December 1st, and we, where we'll give Legislative Council and the Barbough enough time to get it right and think it through with Department of Justice, and therefore, we won't be rushing, because they do have other duties. So I'm open to tabling until next Tuesday, in part of all business. Committee members, Vice Chair Smith, back to you.
Thank you, Chair Henio. Appreciate that. You're the sponsor of this legislation. I'll recognize your tabling motion. I need a second for the tabling. I got a second by Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. This will be up to December 1st on our regular BNF committee meeting. There's no debate on the tabling motion. I will call for the question.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes Green. Honorable Chair Henio?
I agree.
Honorable Chair Henio votes Green. Honorable Karati?
Delegate Amber Canis-Cruddy votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Karati votes Green. Honorable Brown?
Delegate Karati, I mean Delegate Brown votes Green.
Honorable Brown votes Green. Honorable Elmer Begay?
I vote Green, Sido.
Honorable Elmer Begay votes Green. Vice Chair not voting. We have a vote of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in favor. Table this till December 1st. If you had committee members on, number 0266-20, and it'll give plenty of time for Legislative Council to put this amendment out, and we will bring it back forth on December 1st. At this point in time, I will give the gavel back to our Chair Henio. Chair Henio, you have the gavel.
Here, Vice Chair Smith, thank you for helping me out on this legislation. Just so, we'll move forward to our next legislation on the agenda, which is legislation 278-20, sponsored by Shnata, Delegate Amber Karati, and Delegate Mark Freeland, and Delegate Otto So. Peggy, would you read this legislation to the record for us?
I believe the committee was forwarded the copy of the legislation. This is a proposed Navajo Nation Council resolution. It first went to Law and Order Committee, then the Budget, Resources and Development Committee, then Budget and Finance, and it goes on to Health, Education, Human Services, to NABI, and then to the Navajo Nation Council. And it was introduced by Amber Karati, primary sponsor, Otto So, and Mark Freeland are co-sponsors, tracking number 0278-20, in action relating to Law and Order, Resources and Development, Budget and Finance, Health, Education, and Human Services, and the KANU committees and the Navajo Nation Council, amending title 24, Chapter 11, Healthy Denization Act of 2014 at 24 NNC Section 1001 through 1024. And going further into the legislation, the changes to the language starts on page 5 of your electronic copy. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee, or, actually, excuse me, the, there are several comments that were received from the Internet Public Review. The first report indicated that there were no comments received, and that was as of November 11th. But the second report indicates that Dr. Priscilla S. Bar Sanderson, Eleanor Harrison, Leroy, and Anita Sose, and Riko Yuris, those had supporting comments, and then comments and recommendations were made by the NNGE interim CEO, Brian D. Parish. And so those comments are attached for your review, and then the. Hannah Berg, Nathan Urias, Roman McCabe, those were all comments supporting the legislation, and then comments from the Kanta Township, Gabriel Yazi. So those were received by the Legislative Services Office, and then. The Resources and, oh, the Health, or the Law and Order Committee. I'm trying to look for the committee report. I believe that they have a de-pass with no amendments, and then the Resources and Development Committee has a de-pass with no amendments as well, Mr. Chair.
Negotiation, thank you for that reading. Committee members, their motion.
Delegate Brown, all motion.
Motion by Delegate Nathaniel Brown. Is there a second? Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair, second's the motion. Just to committee members, I believe there was a request for an amendment on this legislation, so therefore, I'll give the floor to Delegate Amber Karati. You have the floor for to explain, introduce legislation to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And at any time, if I start breaking up, if you could please let me. We provide before you, legislation 0278-20. This is regarding amending the Denation, the Healthy Denization Act of 2014. It was signed into, signed by, at the time, Navajo Nation President Ben Shelley on November 2014 to promote the health of the Navajo people. Importantly, take minute to recognize the many partners who have assisted in this effort that happened in 2018, towards the offer to the President and Vice President, the Navajo Nation Council. The original legislation was sponsored by Danny Simpson. We have the Navajo Epidemiology Center, the Navajo Nation Division of Community Development, of the Navajo Tax Commission, Northern Arizona University Community Outreach and Patient Empowerment, COPE, Denet College, Denet Community Advocacy Alliance, and the Denet Food Sovereignty Alliance.
uh, Deneh College, Deneh Community Advocacy Alliance, and the Deneh Food Sovereignty Alliance. And so, um, with that, uh, what we wanted was remove Sunset Clause. That was added on the floor, um, to ask Navah Nation Council to, um, review this act. So that is set to, uh, December thirtieth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty. So this, uh, amendment will strike that language. And it will be moved off, uh, actually, and the Tax Commissioners, um, was language to, uh, streamline and, uh, simplify the definitions for the collection of tax. And, uh, what I want to then state for the committee, it's important to note from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, gross revenue was approximately seven point five eight million dollars. Uh, of total revenue, one point five two billion did go into our set-aside coffers. So it benefited the lot, the Land Trust, Acquisition Fund, the Veterans Fund, et cetera. Six point two million went, um, towards chapter wellness. And so this breakdown was provided to all delegates via, uh, your emails and in your, um, mailboxes. There was a breakdown, um, and a report on how this has been used in your community. So, um, what's important to note is that revenue collected within the agency stays within the agency for distribution. So fifty percent of the funds collected within the agency, um, and it is given to, equally to all chapters in that agency. And then fifty percent of the funds, of the agency funds, based on the number of registered voters within the chapter. And so whatever's collected within the agency is redistributed, easy to formula. As of two thousand nineteen, ninety-nine point one percent of this funding was successfully distributed to all one hundred and ten chapters. The remaining allocation, um, at the time of this report, we're waiting for the chapter to, um, submit their request for the funds. And so the average for every chapter is approximately thirteen thousand, uh, dollars. And, uh, we do have a breakdown and the team was able to analyze how this funding was used. Uh, primarily, it was used for, uh, equipment, wellness instruction, building recreation environment, uh, improving the social setting, education, community food and water initiatives, health, healthy emergency preparedness, matching funds and additional expenses. Uh, they do have a breakdown on how each chapter utilized their dollars. So since I represent, um, seven chapters in Northern Agency, I do have a breakdown and work with my chapters on how they're utilizing the money. And also, um, offer suggestions to the chapters on how they can maximize those dollars by either, uh, partnering with nonprofits or, um, for some of their initiatives in the future where they can use, um, their wellness dollars to, um, be some of the seed funding. And so at that point, uh, Chair, I think in terms of the committee, I will yield, um, the rest of my time. Any questions? We appreciate your support. And, uh, this certainly is, uh, a legislation that has taken hundreds of Navah grassroots folks on the ground and has, uh, the support of many partners. Uh, because the goal is to create, um, a healthy denation where we reduce, um, our health disparities and empower our communities. So thank you, Chair.
I can ask you, uh, uh, for introducing this legislation to, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee. With this, uh, I believe, uh, Shnada Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, Chair Henio, Vice Chair, all the Budget and Finance Committee members. Um, I did email out the, the amendment a couple, um, a few minutes ago. Um, I emailed it to Dana as well as Mr. Lowell, our legal counsel for Budget and Finance. And basically, this legislation, um, and, and you did hear from Shima Misnakai that, um, Mr. Gabriel Yazi from Kiinta Township Commission, uh, Kiinta Township, uh, manager did make a comment. And this will, um, so now we have it in writing on what, um, our request is. And basically, they're striking out some of the language on eleven point one eleven. And the other, so I'll, I'll give the rest of the time to Mister, to Mister Yazi. And he will explain, um, uh, what we are envisioning with this, um, the, the junk food tax. So Mister Yazi, if you could, um, address the Budget and Finance Committee.
Yeah. Hello, uh, anybody there? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, um, wasn't too sure, I kinda heard a mute, uh, noise on there. But, um, first of all, I want to say a thank you for allowing us to, um, present this amendment to the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, good afternoon, uh, members of the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, one of the things that I wanted to, I guess, bring up to the committee is, um, what was noted earlier was the Sunset Clause, which is pretty much going to be ending towards the end of this year, which just, uh, legislation addresses and also the streamlining of these definitions. Um, another thing that this legislation does is with this, uh, section, page twelve of the Legislation Two Seventy Eight Dash Twenty, page twelve of that legislation, subsection one thousand one hundred and ten titled Credits. It notes that "There shall be no credits. A person shall not be permitted to take a credit against the tax imposed by this chapter for taxes paid pursuant to any non-discriminatory excise tax imposed by any duly, duly established township or local government subunit." Um, I just wanted to bring to the, uh, attention to the committee that the Kiinta Township, back in August twenty-second of two thousand seventeen, we adopted our local junk food tax ordinance, which was approved by the Kiinta Township Commission. Um, thereafter, the Navah Nation Tax Commission had questioned the authority of the Kiinta Township Commission. And so I ended up meeting with, uh, Mara Nashley back in January eleventh of two thousand eighteen. If you refer to, uh, the town, the, the comments that I had, uh, remitted through the comments section, you'll see a letter from Mara Nashley, pretty much stating that the nomination tax commission had approved of the tax regulations, which is noted as Resolution Number T A X Dash Fifteen Dash Two Two Four, which in that regulation, it allows the Kiinta Township Commission to collect taxes, or this junk food taxes, the junk food tax, if we move forward with adoption of our own ordinance here at the local level, which we did, and it was approved back in two thousand seventeen. So the section underneath the nomination tax commission's, uh, regulations, it's section eleven point one one one, which is titled Relationship with Township and Towns- or Chapter Taxes, which notes, "For purposes of filing and reporting under this junk food tax, when a taxpayer pays junk food tax to the Kiinta Township or pays any governance certified chapter pursuant to a duly enacted chapter tax ordinance, the gross receipts upon which the tax has been paid should not be included in the gross receipts reported to the Office of Nomination Tax Commission on Form One Hundred, One Thousand One Hundred." Example, ABC Company has three stores, one in Kiinta, one in Tonanis Dize Dize, and one in Chinli. ABC pays a junk food tax on its sales at the Kiinta local location and the Tonanis Dize Junk Food Tax on its sales at the Tonanis Dize location. When ABC is reporting and paying the Navah Junk Food Tax on Form One Thousand One Hundred, it should not include any gross receipts from the Kiinta store that have already been taxed by Kiinta or any gross receipts from the Tonanis Dize store that have already been taxed by Tonanis Dize. Um, so in a sense, what, what will happen is if this legislation is to be approved as is, you know, it, it pretty much strikes out the, the credit section where pretty much all the taxes would be going to the, uh, Navah Nation, which would create a double taxation here within the Kiinta Township. Because we do collect our own junk food taxes here at the local level. Uh, we've been doing it back since August of two thousand seventeen. We've provided, um, youth activities to the local communities. I mean, uh, it's just not here in Kiinta that we, um, provide these services too. We have students or, or kids are coming out from Shanto, inscription house, Navah Mountain, Danotso, Mexican Water, you know, Chachimato, these communities use these resources. And we provided a fitness center, you know, because of the pandemic, you know, we shut down the fitness center, um, based on the public health orders. We also provided volleyball, football. We're working on the recreation park design, um, and, you know, that's pretty, pretty much put on hold right now. But we're working on design, new designs for our recreation park. Uh, also providing wrestling for our youth, uh, taekwondo. So we did use these proceeds to, to benefit the youth here in Kiinta. And it also provided an opportunity for five employees to be, um, working at the, the fitness center and being able to keep an eye on some of these youth, youth activities that we put on here in Kiinta. Um, but I wanted to bring that to the, uh, committee's attention. Um, I know Delegate Brown had, uh, submitted a, a proposed amendment, uh, to the committee's attention, which strikes out the, uh, subsection one thousand one hundred and ten titled Credits in this legislation in its entirety. And let me see here, my computer, the screen went out. But, "And replacing that with this language, um, for purposes of filing and reporting under this chapter to the Office of Navah Tax Commission, when a person pays an equivalent tax on unhealthy foods to the Kiinta Township or any local governance certified chapter pursuant to a duly enacted tax ordinance of the Kiinta Township, uh, or such LGA certified chapter, the gross receipts upon which the Towns- Kiinta Township's junk food tax or an LGA certified chapter's junk food tax have been paid shall not be included in the gross receipts reported to the Office of Navah Tax Commission for purposes of paying the tax under this chapter." So that's the, the language that we would like to have, uh, amended for this legislation. Um, that's what I needed to present to the, uh, committee, um, Chair.
So Delegate Brown?
Uh, yeah, um, thank you, Chair. So that pretty much summarizes, um, our presentation and the reason why we're requesting for this amendment. And again, uh, Kiinta Township continues to stink outside the box. And really, um, our goal is to be sustainable. We would like to, we're looking at other municipalities and how they function, how they are able to sustain themselves. Um, and this is another small step in that direction. So all the legislations that we have passed in two thousand seventeen and other legislations, um, we are moving in that direction. So we really want to become sustainable when we collect our, our taxes here and within the ten-mile, um, radius of Kiinta Township, um, jurisdiction. So we are, I know that the commissioners, as well as, uh, Mister Yazi as the manager, and, and, um, everyone that's involved here at the grassroots level of Kiinta, um, the residents here, this is what was envisioned way back when, um, Kiinta Township, um, when it first became a pilot project. So, and, um, and this is really government development, um, kind of, um, what they're also working on, what other chapters like Tubacity is working on, they're collecting their own tax. So it's only two chapters within the Navah Nation that currently do this. So we want to be more sustainable, and this is another step towards that. So we're thinking outside the box. And, um, again, we, we will always be a part of the mother government of the Navah Nation. So right now, um, this is another step towards that. So, um, if you have any questions, um, my agent, Mister Yazi, is here. Uh, the, huh, so the less, yeah.
So, uh, Delegate Nathaniel Brown, Shnada, what's your amendment? I, uh, looking, looking through the email and there, I, I don't see the amendment for this, uh...
Okay, um...
Chair, members of the committee, on page seventy-seven.
Delegate Brown, Shnada, today interruption.
Yeah, um, did you re- so you haven't received it?
At the, uh, the email, you can just, the only last email I have from, uh, Dana Barbaf says nothing is attached because...
Um, I just sent it again to yourself, um, Chair Henio. Um, if I attach a lot of people on there, I know it doesn't, um, it takes a while for it to go through. Um, Mister Yazi, are you able to send it to Peggy as well from? I don't have the best reception here as well, so I don't have good service. I'm trying to send these documents, opening them.
Okay, I'll, I'm sending it right now, uh, Delegate Brown.
Chair, Chair, this is Peggy, can I speak?
Uh, Peggy, uh, go ahead, I believe, do you have the amendment?
Chair, um, if you look at the legislation on page thirteen, if you can, um, it's in the new language, section eleven ten credits. It says, "There shall be no credits. A person shall not be permitted to take a credit against the tax imposed by this chapter for taxes paid pursuant to any non-discriminatory excise tax imposed by any duly established township or local government subunit." Is that the amendment?
Um, yes, let me see. So just sent out again, it is, um, striking out language, um, in men legis- legislation number zero two seven eight dash twenty on page twelve, line sixteen through nineteen, and strike out and underline as follows, subsection one thousand, or eleven, one, 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 zero, under credits. And so the first three lines are, um, str- uh, stricken out. Um, so that is the amendment, and it also explains the basis for the proposed amendment, relationship with, uh, township and chapter taxes. And then, um, and then there's more explanation on the second page as well.
Committee members, did you receive the email, uh, regarding this amendment? Legislation Two Seven Eight Dash Two Zero. Shnada Delegate Yellowhair, have you received the amendment?
Chair, this is Peggy, I have a question.
Go ahead, Peggy.
So, uh, this is to Shias Delegate, uh, Brown. So are you saying that you're striking the entirety of this, um, section eleven ten credits? Because you were saying that you're overstriking three, three lines, and there's three lines on this, uh, new language.
Delegate Brown, may I?
Uh, back, um, back to the committee, um, we need to have the committee, Peggy, do you have the amendment before you or not?
I don't have the amendment, I'm sorry. But I just, I'm, I just saw on page seventy-seven of the, of those, uh, additional, um, comments that were received from the internet, the Kiinta... additional comments that were received from the internet, the Kiwanta memo is in that grouping. And so on page 77, that's where it has the, that section highlighted, but it doesn't show any amendment. Here, I finally got it from you.
Yeah, okay, I'll take a look at that. Oh, let me see if the committee members have received this proposed amendment before I recognize the motion from Delegate Brown. Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair, have you, have you received the proposed amendment?
No, not yet.
It was emailed out just at 11:06, 10:00 a.m.
Okay.
It says Gabriel Yazi. Gabriel Yazi.
All right.
Vice Chairman?
Oh, I got it, sir.
Okay, Delegate Amber Crotty?
Chair, I have not received it yet. I am, I'm looking for it, thank you.
Okay, it's, it was sent out by Gabriel Yazi.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to, if Peggy can let me speak, when she's referring to page 77 of the legislation, those are comments, so that's, those are not actually part of the legislation, that's the comment section. Thank you, Chair.
I guess the actual amendment would be on page 12 or 15, line 16, where it says credit. That's where the actual amendment would be going. Delegate Elmer Begay, have you received the language on the proposed amendment?
Oh, I got it.
Okay. So Peggy, you have the amendment, proposed language, right?
Yes, I do, Chair. I have your, I have that proposed, did you want me to read it?
No, no, not, not yet, I haven't recognized a second yet. Okay, but Delegate Nathaniel Brown, is this your amendment? The information that we, the committee is receiving on the, on this legislation?
Ayate, Chair. Oh yeah, so it should say, Chair, proposed amendment to legislation 278, and then it has a title, and then a subsection, 1,110, under credit, and there's some stricken languages, and then there's added language. But let me give time to my agent to respond to some of these questions and queries. Mr. Yazi?
No, hold on, before, before I recognize, I haven't recognized a second yet, so therefore there are the questions. So let me recognize a second to this. So Peggy, there's a motion on the floor for an amendment number one to this legislation 278-20. So with that, before I recognize a second, go ahead and read the proposed amendment into the record, and then that way, I'll ask for a second.
Okay, it says, amend legislation number 0278 at page 12, line 16 through 19, and strike out and underline as follows. Section 1110 credits, overstricken language, it says, "There shall be no credits. A person shall not be permitted to take a credit against the tax imposed by this chapter for taxes paid pursuant to any non-discriminatory excise tax imposed by any duly established township or local government subunit." New language, "For purposes of filing and reporting under this chapter to the Office of the Navajo Tax Commission, when a person pays an equivalent tax on unhealthy foods," parentheses, "a quote junk food tax," end quote, in parentheses, "to the Kiwanta Township or any Local Governance Act," quote, LGA, end quote, or parentheses, "certified chapter pursuant to a duly enacted tax ordinance of the Kiwanta Township or such LGA-certified chapter, the gross receipts upon which the Kiwanta Township's junk food tax or an LGA-certified chapter's junk food tax has been paid shall not be included in the gross receipts reported to the Office of the Navajo Tax Commission for purposes of paying the tax under this chapter." Mr. Chair.
Agushina, thank you for that reading, Peggy. And now I'll defer to our Legislative Council, Ms. Barbo. Are you there?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I, I am there. The amendment itself, it's worded probably appropriately, but as, as far as being able to intelligently comment on it, I would need to defer to the Tax Commission and the Department of Justice to hear what you.
Okay, I just referred to you so, to see, because usually all amendments are vetted through the Office of Legislative Council, but since you made reference that it's properly worded, then I will, I'll leave it at that until we do get a second and we can get other players to comment. So with that, committee members, there's a motion on the floor to amend amendment number one, and sponsored by Delegate Nathaniel Brown. And it has been read by Ms. Nankai for the committee's reference. So with that, committee member who wants to second this amendment, somebody can unmute the phone?
Yellowhair, Yellowhair.
Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair is second in the motion for amendment number one to legislation 278-20. Okay, with that, committee members, are there any questions or comments?
This is Delegate Crotty with a question.
Delegate Amber Crotty?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would, so the Tax Commission and the exhibit is attached in February, and in looking at my documents, I, I do not have a sponsor of this legislation, and there I did not have any amendments from the Kiwanta Township. So the comment that's on this legislation that we're referring to is November 18th, which was last Wednesday. And so I'd like to ask Mr. Ashley Martin, in terms of, Martin, Ashley, I apologize, in terms of what the recommendations are regarding this amendment and this review. And I do want to state that I would say, without any scheduled meetings called regarding this legislation, I am concerned that the Kiwanta Township would have such a negative response to this legislation that helps all 110 chapters. So in his first page, Gabriel is asking the Navajo Nation Council to reject this legislation, which I think is inappropriate and causes concern that the township would just think about how this affects them and not looking at the benefits of the 110 chapters that, that as delegates we represent. So I would like to hear from the Tax Commission. We do have their commissioner's recommendation, and I'm not sure if the Kiwanta Township was in conversation with the Tax Commission. So thank you, Chairman Hineo.
Agushina, with that, Delegate Amber Crotty, I'll defer to Mr. Martin Ashley. Martin, are you still on the line with us?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I just sent, I just forwarded the, this proposed amendment to you by email, so I don't know if you received it already or not?
Yes, I received it.
Okay, and so therefore there was a question from Delegate Amber Crotty regarding the position of the Tax Commission that you, your office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Budget and Finance Committee, Shenanatai. The amendment that's being proposed is basically restating what it says in our regulations. In our regulations, it does allow for that credit, so I'm kind of, I'm, I'm in support of this, I guess, proposed amendment, but I think it could be simplified, perhaps by just referring to the credit will be allowed within the Navajo tax regulations, something like that, I think might, would be more simplified than restating what it says in the regulation. So generally, I have Mel Rotis make, make comments on this from the legal side, and so I don't know if he's available or not. I did text him, so he may be on the line. If he is on the line, perhaps he can make a suggestion on the language. Mr. Chair.
Okay, back to Delegate Amber Crotty, the questions you asked, were they, they've been answered by Mr. Ashley?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, we did work with Mr. Rotis on this legislation. I'm not sure if Adua or someone from DOJ could provide some guidance on this amendment. Thank you.
Back to the Department of Justice, is anybody on the line with us? Adua, are you still on the line? Mel Rotis, anybody from the Department of Justice? Department of Justice, anybody on the line?
Mr. Chair, this is Mel, can you hear me?
Yes, Mel, we can hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, sorry, I was muted and I had to hang up and call back you. Thank you for the question, Honorable Crotty, regarding the proposed amendment to section 1110 on credits. My understanding in working with the, the Navajo Tax Commission on these proposed amendments is that the Tax Commission was opposed to credits. And I was not at DOJ, I was not at the nation when the junk food tax passed initially back in 2014. But my understanding is that, that there was a sort of a drafting error, you could say, where part of the language on credits was just copied and pasted from the sales tax statute. And that in actuality, there wasn't intended to be a credit for local junk food taxes because they hadn't anticipated that there would be any local junk food taxes. And so when the Tax Commission met on this, that there was some discussion about eliminating that confusion and just saying, "There shall be no credits." And that's my recollection. I don't know if Mr. Ashley wanted to, to add to that. Certainly, it's a policy decision for the committees and for council to consider whether you want there to be credits or to not be credits. But it was the recommendation of the Navajo Tax Commission that there shall be no credits. I hope that answers Honorable Crotty's question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for your response, Mel. So back to your committee members, Delegate Amber Crotty?
Thank you, Chairman Hineo, I'm, thank you.
You were, you, you cut off it, Dan?
No more questions, thank you.
Okay, with that, committee members, any other questions or comments regarding this proposed amendment?
Chair Hineo, this is Vice Chair Smith.
Vice Chair Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, I have a question. How does this affect the 110 chapters with the junk food tax? I know 110 chapters are apt to get in a, a certain amount. Will that amount be deducted to provide taxes to the township? Or will it be considered part of the 111 chapters? Or how, how does, how does this work? I think that question should go to DOJ to clarify, maybe Marty can answer that, on the taxes? Because there's a certain amount that's being collected, and each year, there's a certain amount that's divvied out to chapters based on the, I think it's the 50-50 formula? And we have Kiwanta chapter, and then we have the township. So is that more or less like giving additional funding to the Kiwanta Township? Because they're within just the certain amount of geographical area, and yet the chapter itself has a larger geographical area that covers outside the township of Kiwanta? Or how does that work? Do they not, chapter does not allocate the funding within the township? And the chapter uses that money outside the township to help folks that are, that can use, utilize the junk food tax? And then how, how does the Kiwanta Township get their portion? Is that based off of their population or is that based off their? How, how does that work, Shenanatai, on behalf of this amendment? Thank you, Chair.
Hey, thank you for that question, Vice Chair Smith. You asked the Tax Commission, so I'll refer this question to Mr. Marty Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair Smith, regarding the question. I believe that there's need, there needs to be some research done on the, on the delegation that's been provided to the Kiwanta Township. I'm, I'm not clear on all the taxing authority that's been given to them. And so I, I believe an example is, is the, you know, in Tubacity's case, I'm just using that as an example, in Tubacity's case, the only tax that's been delegated to Tubacity chapter is the sales tax. The junk food tax is not delegated to them. That's my understanding. So on Kiwanta's side, I'm not clear whether they have authority to impose an additional tax beyond the sales tax. That I would need to leave to the legal people. But as far as the collection of the, the junk food tax, you know, the collections is, is kept attractive by agency. And so I believe you understand the distribution that's made or the calculation on how, on how that, the distribution amount is arrived at. So the calculation, the amounts collected by each agency is kept in that agency, and then the distribution made to those chapters in that agency is based on the 50-50 formula. So, so in, in Kiwanta chapter's place, they receive the junk food tax. the junk food tax. Now, if Kienta chapter is not participating in the Navajo Nation's collection of junk food tax, all that is kept at the Kienta township, if that's the case. And so they're not contributing to what the Navajo Nation distributes back out to the 110 chapters. So that's the reason why I'm posing the question about what is author, what Kienta township is authorized as far as taxing. I know the sales tax portion, for sure, I'm not sure about the other, other taxes that they are allowed to impose, including the junk food tax. So I hope that answers maybe part or some of your Delegate Smith's question.
Okay, hello, Mr. Marty Ashley. Back to the Department of Justice. Mel Rotis, if you're still on the line with us, or anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Mel. Still on the line. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Vice Chair. The simple answer is that the size of the pie will shrink if, if credits are allowed, because it would reduce the revenue that's being put into the shared pot. So the chapters, so the chapters within that agency that have a share of that will get a little bit less. I hope that makes sense. Now, the legal question is more complicated in terms of what Mr. Ashley was referring to, and I do agree that more legal research would be needed. When council initially approved the sales tax pilot project for Kienta Township, it was for a sales tax. And then Kienta Township had home rule authority, and then their, the scope of their taxation increased. And so there is, there is a legal question about what taxes can Kienta Township impose. Should it just be sales tax, or is it more than sales tax? And I don't think that we're going to resolve that complex issue in the course of today's meeting.
Don't think that relates to this.
Are you still on the line, Mel? Somebody's making their own.
I'm here, sir.
Okay. Use your phone, otherwise it'd be respectful.
In terms of, Mr. Chair, in terms of, you know, whether other chapters would have the authority to impose a local sales tax, the Uniform Local Tax Code that was passed several years ago just gave chapters the authority to impose a sales tax, only a sales tax. And so unless that were to be amended, or unless, you know, there were to be explicit language put into the Healthy Division of the Nation Act, my opinion would be that chapters would not have the authority to impose a local junk food tax. But that, that chapter issue of, of a chapter imposing a local junk food tax is actually a separate issue from whether Kienta Township can impose its junk food tax.
Okay, back to Vice Chair Smith. Questions you posed, have they been answered?
Thank you, Chairman Henio. The question I also posed was, should Kienta Township be allowed to collect? Are they just going to be servicing within their geographical area? And does that mean when Kienta chapter gets their funding, they're not going to be servicing anything within the township's geographical area? They'll be servicing the greater portion of their chapter boundary? That's the question I was asking, and it seems to be Kienta's benefiting by getting both through the chapter and the township. Now, how does that work if you're a membership of the chapter, and then you're also considered under the numbers of the township? How does that, how do you decipher that? That's, that's the big question, Shenanda. Thank you.
Okay, one question from Vice Chair Smith. Would like to answer that, tax, Marty Ashley, or Mr. Mel Rotis?
Thank you, Chair. Either, either, if DOJ can give a clear answer or tax through Marty Ashley, this is going to go to the council. And when council makes the final recommendation or to make amendments, these are something that would be in line to understand what's actually happening, because chapters do look at, do look for that unhealthy food tax funds for their needs within their area, and I heard it be depleting. And you know well that COVID-19 in itself is really putting a damper on business. Taxes, we're shutting down at 3:00 p.m. You don't see businesses open on weekends. I drive by Nahtutzi on weekends to go pick up groceries at 10:00. So to add another one on board with this happening, and we just talked about our priorities this morning, so those are the big questions that I'm looking at, Shenanda. Thank you.
So with this question from Vice Chair Smith, Mr. Rotis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. I think that Vice Chair Smith's question is about fairness, and to me, that's, I mean, it's a really good question. Essentially, it's, is the chapter, or the chapter and the township double dipping, so to speak? If the, if the township is collecting its local junk food tax, and then if the chapter is benefiting from the shared pot of junk food tax revenue that's distributed to chapters within the agency, if I understand the question correctly. But again, that would be a policy decision for the committees and, and council to make, to make that judgment call about fairness, you know, and would this, would allowing a tax credit for local junk food taxes be in the best interest of the Navajo Nation as a whole, in the best interest of chapters in that, in the agency, and even, you know, is it in the best interest of Kienta Township and Kienta chapter? And so that, that's what I'm saying about, that would be a policy decision, that fairness question.
Okay, thank you for that response. Mel, maybe Mr. Marty Ashley, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Budget and Finance Committee. I really don't have any additional beyond what Mel has mentioned. It does get complicated, and it is, it is a fairness issue, and that's, those are my comments.
Okay, with that, thank you. Back to the committee. Any further questions or comments on Amendment Number One?
Chairman Henio, I got one more question.
Vice Chair Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. And speaking of fairness and policymaking, I know that the chapter is already getting a certain amount, and Kienta is now wanting to get on board with this amendment. And could that be divided in half? The chapter here is getting so many dollars per year, and now Kienta, could the chapter and the township say, "Okay, and give half to Kienta Township and give the other half to the chapter"? Is that possible through the question of taxes and the question to DOJ? Thank you.
Mr. Mel Rotis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the committee. So, and I, I'm sorry if I didn't clarify this earlier, but Kienta Township actually does have a junk food tax right now in place. And so, and Kienta Township has its own tax ordinances. And so when you're, when you're talking about distribution of local tax revenue, that would be pursuant to local tax ordinances, as opposed to something that could be determined by the Navajo Nation Tax Code. The Navajo Nation Tax Code determines the revenue distribution for the nation's junk food tax, or unhealthy food tax. And so if you're, but if the question is, can the Navajo Nation Council force Kienta Township to share its local tax revenue? I would say the answer is no.
With that, back to Vice Chair Smith. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that, Mel, and Marty, for those answers on the question I posed. Yeah.
And that, any other questions, committee members? Amendment Number One. I'm not hearing any, so with that, call for the question on Amendment Number One. Shenanda Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
I'll vote green. As is. Thank you.
Delegate Yellowhair votes green on Amendment Number One. Vice Chair Smith?
Red.
Vice Chair Smith votes red on Amendment Number One. Shenanda Delegate Amber Crowde on Amendment Number One?
Delegate Amber Keanus Baugh Crowde votes red. Thank you.
Delegate Amber Crowde votes red. Shenanda Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Delegate Brown votes green. Yeah.
Shenanda Delegate Nathaniel Brown votes green. Shenanda Delegate Elmer P. B. Gay? Delegate Elmer and P. B. Gay? I think you're on mute. Shenanda Delegate Elmer P. B. Gay? Are you still with us? Elmer P. B. Gay, last call. Are you still with us on the line? Okay, with that, Elmer P. B. Gay is on the line. We do have on the voting, we have two in favor and two opposed on this Amendment Number One. And with this, so back to the Chair for the tie-breaking vote. And after listening to all the conversations regarding this issue, and as far as the pros and cons, and the responses from the Navajo Tax Commission, and also from the Department of Justice, ADGAD, he's not the joint eagle, and how this amendment is, put it together, the Chair by votes red on this Amendment Number One.
A question of privilege, Chair. This is Delegate Brown.
So with this, Shenanda Delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Thank you, Chair. My understanding is even with three red and two green, this legislation will still move forward to NABIC, ultimately, Navajo Nation Council, correct?
This is only on Amendment Number One. We haven't voted on the main motion yet. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. So if you wish, you can still move forward to your amendment at the next level. Okay, back to the main motion. Back to the main motion, committee members. Is there any other questions or comments regarding this legislation?
Yeah, this is Peggy. I have a question.
Peggy, go ahead.
Okay, when you look at the legislation, how it's constructed, and this is a question for Dana. It has the Law and Order Committee Authority, the Resources and Development Committee Authority, and then the Health, Education, and Human Services Authority, and the NABIC Committee, and the Navajo Nation Council. It doesn't have the Budget and Finance Committee Authority in the Section One Authority part of the legislation. So I think that might need an amendment to include budget and finance oversight over Tax Commission or taxes, something of that sort. It's a question.
Okay, with that, thank you. Thank you for that. Committee members, any other questions or comments? I'm not hearing any, so with that, I'll call for the main, question on the main motion. Shenanda Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair? Delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
I'll vote green.
Delegate Yellowhair votes green on the main motion. Shenanda Vice Chair Smith?
Green.
Vice Chair Smith votes green on the main motion. Shenanda Delegate Amber Crowde?
Delegate Amber Keanus Baugh Crowde votes green. Thank you.
Shenanda Delegate Amber Crowde votes green on the main motion. Shenanda Delegate Nathaniel Brown on the main motion?
Delegate Brown votes green. Yeah.
Shenanda Delegate Brown votes green on the main motion. Shenanda Delegate Elmer P. B. Gay on the main motion? Shenanda Delegate Elmer P. B. Gay? Elmer P. B. Gay, last call? With that, we have four in favor, zero opposed. With that, we have four in favor, uh, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Uh, Delegate Elmer and P. B. Gay not voting also. With this, so, committee members, uh, that takes care of all the new business items on our agenda. And, uh, okay, back on the agenda, moving forward is, um, we have, uh, item five A, uh, receiving reports. And this is, um, five A is the controller. Uh, do we have the Controller's office on the line?
Uh, Chair, this is the Controller. We're on the line.
Okay. The, um, report item has been added by, uh, we're adopting the agenda, and, um, this is, um, I get, giving the Budget and Finance Committee a report regarding the CARES Act, uh, as far as, uh, I believe what Vice Chair Smith was referring to was the deadlines that we have, uh, put in place with the legislations that, um, were passed by the Navajo Nation Council, particularly November twentieth, and then also December fifteenth, and of course, the ultimate date of December twentieth, uh, December thirtieth, I'm sorry, December thirtieth. And so therefore, um, I'll defer the question, a question to, um, Vice Chair Smith as far as what he needs to hear, uh, for the committee. Uh, then therefore, you can begin your, um, report that way. So Vice Chair Smith?
Uh, thank you, Chair Henio, and, uh, committee members of the Budget and Finance Committee, and those that are listening online. And, uh, Controller, uh, Sui, good afternoon. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Uh, the question is, uh, CARES money. We have a deadline, and on that deadline, all this money will be reverted back to hardship. And, um, there is some projects that are still pending, specifically under the Navajo, um, NTUA, Navajo Tribal Utilities Authority. And the question was, how can we ensure that these projects that are still pending, and they were identified, the shovel ready, and that they would be completed by December thirtieth? However, there's a couple of deadlines to ensure that they're either encumbered, or they're, they're contracted out, or they are ready to, uh, be paid out, and some are in the midst, midst of, uh, waiting for payment. Um, I know I have, uh, the que, the question was asked by, um, Navajo Tribal Utility Authority Attorney, Mr. Arsh. Uh, he was, uh, wanted to ensure that the CARES money will be utilized for these projects out there. Power line, um, telecommunication, just to name a couple of them. But I think, uh, Mr. Arsh is on board with us. If there's any, uh, questions, I'd like to turn it over to him, Chair, on behalf of, uh, this report, so that we can get on the, uh, aspects of knowing where and how to deal with this, uh, deadline, because there's a lot of money that's at stake. Uh, there's a lot of projects that are at stake, and we'd like to ensure that these projects get completed, and that they will be done, we'll use in the CARES money under the, uh, Navajo Tribal Utility Authority's, uh, timeline, and ensure that these will be completed. Chair Henio?
Okay with that. Do we have, uh, NTUA representatives on the line? Do we have, uh, NTUA representatives on the line? Hello? Last call for NTUA representatives.
Hello, hello. I'm on mute.
Who's on mute?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, who's this?
Okay, I'm sorry. I was trying, I was talking, I, I guess I had to press a button, so, I, okay. Hello, uh, good afternoon or good morning, Chair Henio. This is Arsh Mualimi with NTUA.
Okay, Vice Chair Smith has, uh, given you, uh, the floor to, um, regarding the, uh, deadlines imposed by the legislations, and how, uh, given, uh, from NTUA's perspective, how, what, what the impacts would be on projects?
Sure, yeah. Uh, once again, this is Arsh Mualimi from NTUA. Um, thank you for letting me speak a little bit. Yeah, but, uh, we were, we received a, I guess, a notification, I don't know if it's, it's a memo or just a notification from, um, one of the departments that, you know, we have to, uh, come, be pursuant to, um, NIBIO dash forty-nine dash twenty, that, um, there's specific language in there. We're aware of the November twentieth, uh, deadline for encumbered funds, but there's also a December fifteenth deadline. And, um, I'm sure Controller Kirk and DOJ has a better, fully grasp of, of what it states, but essentially, what NTUA's concerns, um, are, is that, um, you know, that we understand that the funds are encumbered once the President, um, signs a, a contract and a contract number is issued. Um, and I think, um, you know, we're okay with the November twentieth deadline because we have those contracts in place. We have projects, you know, that are moving forward, and we're going through the process, you know, with that December thirtieth, uh, deadline. Um, and then on the December fifteenth deadline, it's, i- i- and I don't have the specific language in front of me, but it states that, um, the email that we got is if the funds, um, if the goods aren't delivered or the funds, or the services aren't performed by December fifteenth, the funds will be unencumbered and reverted back to the hardship. And, um, I don't know if that's an internal mechanism for the nation projects, or if NTUA has a subrecipient and subcontractor, is, if that's, I, I mean, if, if that's possible on that end. But, you know, if, if we do have to finish those projects by December fifteenth, then we have to pretty much put down, and, you know, for example, on the power side, we have to, um, eliminate probably between sixty to ninety, um, power line, um, projects. Um, that means that we can't connect about sixty to ninety additional homes because we, we scheduled it out for this December thirtieth deadline. So if that's the case, we would just focus on the homes that are, um, already in progress, um, if that can meet the December fifteenth date. And the rest of those homes, we're gonna have to, you know, just remove because of the date, um, of December fifteenth, if that's the new deadline. And then that goes, the same thing for all projects across the board. For example, for broadband, we have to eliminate about thirty of the sites for the improvements. We have, um, you know, thirty broadcast sites we're making improvements on, and we based our schedule off of December thirtieth. You know, our crews are still working, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, it's tough times right now, but, you know, we wanna get these projects built for the benefit of the nation by December thirtieth, and that's why our team, you know, our, our offices are still open and crews still working. But it'll just be, um, we have to understand, you know, if that's a, if the date is December fifteenth or December thirtieth, because that changes how we approach our projects and how we schedule out projects. Um, so it'll, it'll affect pretty much pro, products across the board. It'll affect the solar units, because, you know, we're already up against the clock with, uh, you know, the procurement of the solar units. It took a while to get those in, and, you know, it's scheduled out pretty much till the end of the month as well. So we, you know, we use the December thirtieth deadline and as our, as our, you know, as our, um, benchmark as far as what date we need to get projects in service. And it'll affect a lot of things. Now, you know, NTUA, on the other hand, NTUA is looking, you know, last week, we, you know, talked to all of our departments to see what funds that, what projects we can't complete and what funds we can expend by December thirtieth. So we're going through that exercise now. It's not like we're waiting to see, you know, the last minute, you know, what, uh, what funds we need to revert. We plan on doing that mid-December anyways, to look at what funds we plan on reverting, um, so that we have, so that we have an idea we can present to council, um, or the appropriate committees to do that. But as far as this December fifteenth date, it'll affect a lot of projects that we can complete by December thirtieth. Um, and essentially, we'll have to put those, um, we, we can't complete, we, we wouldn't be able to complete them by December fifteenth. So we were just concerned about that when it was brought up and the email was sent, and we just needed some clarification to see if that applies, um, to NTUA as a subrecipient, or if that's an internal mechanism for funds, um, that are within the Navajo Nation accounting process, and it's a, it's more of a, you know, you know, it's a process internally. We're not, we're not quite sure. We're just getting clarification on that. And then, you know, the, the projects that it will affect right now, even the funds that we haven't been dispersed, are mainly the, um, the system systems money, and then also the broadband money, um, you know. NTUA expects to spend, well, we will spend all of the broadband money, and we got the amendments, um, approved generously by the council to, you know, put more money into broadband. So we're intending to finish those projects out if we can get to December thirtieth, so, you know, we just need a dispersed amount of funds so we can complete those projects, as well as the system projects. So, that's kind of a lot of information, but I appreciate any, um, any clarification or, um, you know, interpretation of that as it relates to NTUA projects. Thank you.
So back to you, Vice Chair Smith. Is that complete?
So, delegates, that, um, summarizes our, uh, concerns on the, uh, NTUA projects, and hopefully get a favorable answer, because there is, uh, money that are available and it can be used, but it's just basically, uh, getting the, uh, funds to get these projects completed. So I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chair. Thank you.
Okay with this, so, uh, our Controller, Mr. Berlin Kirk. You're on. Um, this is a, a question for a report from the office on clarification regarding, uh, the impacts of the deadlines. So you have the floor?
Okay, um, Chair and, um, members of the Budget and Finance Committee, um, good afternoon. Um, so I can jump right in on this. Um, basically, our office goes by the, uh, the legislations that get passed. Um, so, and then essentially, uh, in this case, with the NABI resolution, um, it does, uh, set up that deadline of November twentieth. And I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, but the language, uh, for the eleven-twenty, twentieth deadline that has come and gone, that one has to do with, we have to expend it or encumber it. Um, so we, our office has been working, um, diligently all, all up until that time. I had my procurement manager, purchasing manager here pass ten PM on Friday. Some of us, we left around eight o'clock. Uh, people were still trying to deliver documents to us. Some of, most of those documents, I would say, were incomplete. Um, uh, and then also throughout that day, there was a exposure upstairs. We got chased out of our building between eleven and two. People still, the training crew, remediation crew wanted to chase out of our building at six, um, Friday night, but I told them to come back the next day 'cause that day was important to try to get as many of those things encumbered. Um, and so that's what we are doing on the twentieth. Um, so essentially, as I said, you either have to expend by that day or encumber it. And, um, the other thing was, uh, what you're just, we're just talking about now. Uh, the other deadline date was December fifteenth, and I don't have the specific language, but basically, that language says, um, uh, anything that is encumbered, uh, it has to be, essentially be obligated to the extent that the expenditures are not incurred. And usually what that means is the goods and services have to be delivered by that day. Um, so that's where I think, um, we, there's a lot of questions around it. Um, number one question, which I think, uh, NTUA, Arash is asking this, whether that deadline applies to subrecipient agreements. Um, I believe it, uh, it applies across the board. The legislation doesn't accept anything. It says anything encumbered. So I think that means your vendor contracts, your, and/or subrecipient agreements. Um, so understandably, I did have a lot of questions. Um, I did meet with DOJ. They had questions, um, because, uh, essentially, that December fifteenth deadline has contractual implications, whether it's a professional services contract or a subrecipient agreement. Um, so, uh, I think it does move up some of these things. Um, I will say, uh, one of the main question I got from my DOJ meeting was the, the big contract that NBOH has done regarding wraparound services and those things, um, because it does have an impact for the fifteen, or should I say the fourteen days, fifteen days from the fifteenth through the December thirtieth. Um, so, uh, so we're trying to figure out, you know, how to address those things, because some contracts will have ongoing work, and whether they can just stop the work, or, you know, move to those things. Um, so I think, um, regarding these subrecipient agreements, it's basically just timing them to make sure that your vendors or your, your sub-grantees are aware of this deadline. And I think it's, um, on those particular department divisions to be managing those, um, whether, you know, for instance, like, NTUA, they have a number of subrecipient agreements that are being managed by either DIT, uh, DWR, DCD. Um, and so those relevant, uh, divisions and departments should be working with NTUA to manage the, the scope of the work that needs to be done. Um, so essentially, um... So that's kind of, uh, essentially, in terms of the question that's being asked, um, I believe for NTUA, we have everything encumbered from the various projects. Um, uh, we've also got, I believe we have all the encumbrance done. We have the reporting. I think we've made payments up till October. Uh, some of these payments are what we call advance, and then we also have, under federal rules, have to do cash management. Right now, NTUA has excess cash of over sixty-four million. Uh, so we're, uh, NTUA and us will probably have to get together soon to look into the cash management, um, compliance aspect of it. Um, so that's one thing, um, we've gotta do. But otherwise, uh, any questions on, uh, project management and those types of things, I think obviously can defer to NTUA. Um, so in terms of, I can move on and just kind of do some big picture reporting on the eleven-twentieth deadline. Right now, um, we did send out the, the updated expenditure report that as of close of business yesterday. Uh, I will say that, um, we have the budgeted amount of seven hundred and fourteen million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. We, we have expenditures of two hundred and sixty-five million, five hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-four dollars. And then as of close of business yesterday, we had open commitments of a hundred and fifty-one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy. We had a budget balance of two hundred and ninety-seven million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-five dollars. Um, some of the other questions we, uh, people have asked, um, would be... Um, some of the other questions we, uh, people have asked, um, would be if, if there was a, a reversion to the hardship after all this activity. Um, if you'll notice, uh, hardship has the forty-nine million reflected in the two ninety-seven. There's also, uh, forty million reflected in the, in the eighty-two million left over for natural resources, that's reflected in the two ninety-seven. So I would estimate additional funds, just given the activities through, uh, uh, as a result of this, um, November twentieth deadline, um, I would estimate additional funds going into hardship would be around a hundred and ninety million. Um, so we have, I believe we have some payments that need to go out for, uh, for small business of about twelve and a half million out of the CED's amount that's reflected, so that payment's still pending. So if you're looking at the report, um, so that's kind of how it looks like for hardship program and the eleven-twenty deadline. Um, real quick, I can say that as of this morning, we had approximately two hundred and forty thousand applicants for the hardship program. A hundred and forty-four thousand was online, ninety-six thousand is by paper. Um, and so we've uploaded about forty thousand records into vital statistics database, um, to date, uh, and then also, um, we, we had fielded twenty thousand calls from our call center, we've answered, received and answered fifteen thousand emails. Um, we also added a text-in option to submit your copy of the CIC and case for those Navaho that aren't in the database. Uh, and so, um, given the, uh, the nine, approximately ninety that's already, uh, in the hardship, and then add another one hundred and ninety, that brings it to two hundred and eighty million estimated. That gives, uh, based on some assumption, approximately a hundred, fourteen hundred dollars per adult and four hundred and seventy-one per minor, that's just estimates. Um, so that's the update on the hardship. Uh, regarding, um, the chapter expenditure plan, 'cause, uh, essentially the NABI resolution, uh, reset the third deadline to November twentieth as well. Uh, so we made, um, approximately close to thirty million in bulk purchases, which is more for consumable goods like PPEs, food, um, and those types of goods. Um, uh, what that, what, what that will translate to you is about seven thousand three hundred pallets, uh, and about three to five hundred trucks, uh, that will deliver all, all this, um, consumable goods that will then be distributed to the chapter. Um, a lot of documentation got sent in, but they were insufficient. Um, and so, uh, not a lot, no, no other expenditures and no other encumbering, um, essentially took place because, uh, as I mentioned, sitting here Friday night, we were getting a lot of, um, requisitions that were incomplete, um, a lot of blank, uh, forms and things like that. Uh, and although we, uh, we've changed the deadline for those budget requests, um, a couple of times, which doesn't leave enough time to do procurement. So I think there was like four days altogether. Um, and so that's kind of the report on the chapter expenditure plan. Um, and I think that's it. Um, if you look at the expenditure report that we, our office usually sends out, that just kind of shows, uh, some of the activity, um, and so forth, so in, in detail, or, and also by, uh, resolu-, uh, resolutions down below, um, so it breaks it out by that as well. So that's kind of, uh, the other thing is, um, let's see, um, we've started the single audit, we've had the initial audit planning meetings with Moss Adams, uh, because there were a few activities regarding the, uh, cares within the last fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen, mainly the small business and the special duty pay. So those, those will get audited in our single, uh, as part of our single audit. So we've begun the audit planning for, with Moss Adams on that, uh, last week. So we'll, we'll be looking into not only the cares, uh, activity, but also the other federally funded programs that are, you know, major programs that are up for single audit. So we've started that endeavor as well. Um, uh, I think that's all I have to report, um, then unless you have any other questions, if you have.
Committee members, are there any questions? Uh, hold on, with that, uh, that's the extent of the report, so that, committee members, their motion to accept the report.
Uh, this is Delegate Brown, all motion.
Motion by Shunanda, Delegate Nathaniel Brown. Is there a second?
Second by Delegate Crowdie.
Second by Shunanda, Delegate Amber Crowdie. With that, committee members, any questions, comments for our Controller's office?
This is Delegate Crowdie with a question, Chair.
Uh, you have Shunanda, Delegate Amber Crowdie.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. If I can ask, Madam Controller, does to restate the approximate breakdown of the hardship? If I'm under, does it relate to, I didn't, oh, and minor, and then what was her base amount? How many, look here, thank you.
Okay, for that question, uh, I'm back. Any, any other questions, committee members?
Uh, Chair, any of us, Vice Chair Smith?
Uh, Vice Chair Smith, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Anio, and committee members of the, uh, Budget Finance. Uh, NTUA is, um, hasn't received any funding for their Sistern and broadband disbursements, and, uh, they're anticipating that they'll be reverting back some, but definitely not close to sixty million. And there was a legislation that was passed and it's signed into law by the President, CN-eight-nine-twenty. I guess that would go to, uh, the question would be, in here it talks about, um, NTUA was awarded funding under page two of six, uh, it talks about the, uh, Sistern system, and, uh, it, uh, gives the date of December thirtieth, twenty twenty, NTUA requests to amend the water project expenditure plan. And if this has been signed into law, then why is the money being held up, not being provided, under page two of six of this, uh, legislation signed by the President and passed by the council? Uh, it, under G, it talks about the resolution number, the CJY-sixty-seven-twenty. NTA was allocated thirty-nine million five hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars for the, uh, water fund projects. And it goes on listing these, uh, various ones, which would be Exhibit Six. So the question is, um, what's the delay, and how can we ensure that, uh, we don't, that we maximize the, uh, projects and we maximize the use of the money, and we get these, uh, projects completed before December thirtieth, twenty twenty? However, on the other hand, it seems to be hardship is being provided, but yet payments will still be paid out in January. I thought everything was supposed to be done, completed, handed over, turnkey, and no payments, nothing should be, uh, provided over into January. That, that's, that's confusing, and that's what chapters are, uh, wanting to, uh, get an understanding. Well, on this point in time, they're telling us that everything will be collected and it'll be no longer available after December thirtieth, and it'll be sent back to the US Treasury. And I think that's why NTUA is really concerned about getting their, uh, funding to expedite these, uh, projects, Shunanda. Thank you.
Okay, with that, uh, back to our Controller, Shama, Mr. Berlin Kirk for the response. Two questions from two delegates.
Um, okay, so Chair and members of the committee, uh, Chitayja asks about the hardship numbers. Essentially, if you're looking at, uh, the expenditure report, it says the budget available is around two hundred and ninety-seven million. So if you take out the payment that's pending for small business, uh, because it takes, because we have to go through a third party for those payments, um, it does take a, a few days. Uh, so that one is payment pending, so you, so you would, uh, take that out from the two ninety-seven, uh, twelve and a half million, you come to about two hundred and eighty-four million. Uh, just kind of for estimating purposes, we say, uh, two eighty. We take out what's reflected in the expenditures, which is the forty-nine that was originally put in, as well as the forty that was reallocated from, uh, water resources from the water project. Uh, so that gives, you take those two numbers out of the two eighty, so approximately, at this point, we're, we're estimating still, because things need to be settled, um, so we're estimating additional a hundred and ninety million, in addition to the forty-nine and the forty. So that's, um, so it springs it to two eighty. Um, and based on the two eighty, uh, if you, if you are using the, um, OOC's website, that interactive, uh, chart, uh, I think our, our assumption was three twenty-seven, um, seven sixty-two members, and seventy-five percent of them, uh, apply, which is around two hundred and forty-five thousand, and out of that, thirty percent are adult, uh, oh, thirty percent minor, seventy percent adult, you'll see that, um, the breakdown. Uh, so regarding two eighty, uh, I believe we're looking at about fourteen, fourteen hundred dollars per, for the adult, and two, four seventy-one for minor. That's based on our assumptions. So, uh, as, as I mentioned earlier, we are still getting, um, applications, and we still have close to a week left, or a week left, so we're, we're get, we've gotten two hundred and forty thousand applications, and we still have a week left. So, um, so those are the numbers. Otto Chitayja, you're asking about NTUA specifically. Uh, I believe on the Sistern pain, uh, Sistern, we did send a payment out. I, I, we did confirm with NTUA yesterday, uh, that those payments... So we did check with accounts payable, NTUA was asking about those, uh, and we did confirm with accounts payable that those payments for Sistern were sent, uh, November sixteenth. Um, regarding the solar to broadband transfer, I believe that is, uh, I don't believe that resolution is included in the NABI, and therefore subject to the November twentieth, because I think that's, uh, a newer resolution that we allocate those dollars, um, from, from, uh, solar to broad, um, uh, broadband. Um, I believe we're waiting for the, the amendments to the sub-recipient agreement. So, um, with these, these being federal funds, we have to have those sub-recipient agreements, uh, finalized, and so without them, we can't make a payment. Uh, it's required by federal rules. Um, the other thing is, um, uh, we, we need to discuss with NTUA cash management, because they have, of all the payments we've made to them, keep in mind, some of these payments are advanced payments. Um, so we have to, by, under federal rules, we have to exercise cash management, it's a requirement by, by the Fed of our sub, sub-recipient, and not just NTUA, but all sub-recipient. And so we do, are aware that, uh, they have the sixty-four million excess cash, and so we're gonna need to sit down with them and reconcile, et cetera. So, um, uh, I, uh, and oh, your other question about payment. Um, if you, if you are familiar with grant, the grants, uh, working with federal funds, um, you'll hear the concept of liquidation period. Um, so there's two things to remember. One is when, uh, the expenditures are incurred. Uh, so this is all explained in the SAQs and the Treasury guidelines. So Treasury says everything has to be incurred by December thirtieth. What that means is the goods and the services have to be delivered by then. Um, so then, uh, the, the Fed then later added the liquidation language, what in essence is a little liquidation language. So although there's gonna be some cases where your goods and services are delivered on December thirtieth, uh, but we, the nation, we're not gonna be able to pay on that day. Let's say a bunch of PPEs come in on the thirtieth, um, so there's no way we can turn around and make a payment on that same day. So the Fed, uh, usually says you have, in this particular case, we have ninety days to liquidate, meaning our vendor has to give us the invoice, and then we have to go turn around and, uh, pay that bill. So that's, so don't confuse what the incurred means as opposed to the liquidation. So when we're talking about hardship, um, under an assistance program like hardship, uh, you have to determine your eligibility, your criteria, get everybody in, identify all the, all those who are eligible, and you declare it before December thirtieth. Although you can pay the, 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 those applicants, you know, that you've approved, you can pay them in, let's say, the first week of January. So as long as you go do what we're doing, um, we determine eligibility and we're accumulating the applica-, application pool, and, and we're doing all of that. Um, conceivably, we could sit there and wait till everything clears out and throw everything to the pot on, like, the first or second week of January and pay, you know? So that's the concept, not to be confused. Um, so there's two different things. One is incurred, incurred, your expenditure has to be incurred. The other one is liquidation, meaning like you're paying your bill. So that's how it works. Um, I hope that clarified your question. Um, let me know if you have any other questions, if you have.
Back, uh, any other questions, committee members? I'm not hearing any, so.
Chair Anio, is this Vice Chair Smith? I'd like to, um, give the floor over to, uh, NTUA on behalf of, uh, speaking towards the, uh, fact that, uh, they, they really need to get these projects done, and, uh, that's why we had this, uh, put on the agenda, because I hate to see these projects not happen. And, uh, I'd like to turn the floor over to, uh, the Attorney, Mr. Arsh, on behalf of, uh, giving us some recommendations on what we could do possibly to help with NTUA, 'cause a lot of folks are... of folks are happy to hear that there was money allocated for certain projects. And if we lose those projects, if we don't get those projects done, it's all done in vain. So Chair, if that's all possible, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, that's, NTUA, do you have anything to ask?
Sure, yeah. And I thank you, Chair and Vice Chair and Controller Kirk, I appreciate the comments. Yeah, I mean, if, you know, if we have to use the December 15th date, like I said before, quite a bit of projects that we had scheduled for the month of December, we're just going to have to, we're just going to have to put those, we can't, we can't complete them with the CARES dollars, because they're not going to be, we'll have to revert those dollars. Essentially, what will happen is, we won't get the funds, you know, from the CARES Act and we would have to, you know, dis-sell, fund those projects through our budget, which we don't have for these projects. These projects weren't budgeted, they're projects that we added on as part of the CARES Act. And Controller Kirk, you know, kind of, NTUA was using the same, I guess, the same framework or the same idea as far as the, when you talked about incurring funds. So we use the date, kind of like what Controller Kirk is saying, that we base our schedule on when the, when the funds are incurred. So we understand that we have to get, we understood that we had to get the projects in service and completed by December 30th. And that's where we're basing it off of, you know, for example, on the Sistern Systems, you know, working with the Division of Community Development and NECA, we're working with both of those, Division and the Enterprise to, you know, that there's steps to the project. It works sequentially, for example, with Sistern Systems. You first have to identify the customer, you've got to lay the foundation and the concrete for the bathroom additions, you've got to build the bathroom additions, you've got to housewire, and then you've got to power the project. So from what we understand, if you complete 80% of the project and you don't complete the last 20% by the end of the year, then, you know, the project isn't, the full, the project quote unquote, isn't in service. So, you know, we're fearful that we're going to lose a lot of those funds if, you know, those projects, you can't do them all at once, you've got to do them sequentially, you've got to wait for the concrete to sit, you've got to, you know, get the electrician out there, and then you've got to install the, either power line or the, or the solar unit. So, you know, some of those things is, you know, with the tight schedule, we were going to incur the funds by December 30th, but we didn't intend, there was no, we didn't understand that we had to incur them by December 15th. So, you know, that's going to be a major problem for a lot of those projects. And then even on the broadband side, you know, a lot of the scheduling of the equipment, you know, some of these towers, you know, we were lucky to get some, maybe one or two early, but a lot of these towers, you order the equipment and, you know, it takes time to get the equipment and then to install it. So they will be completed after December 15th. If that's the case, then, you know, we lose out on all the dollars for these, some of these towers as well. And then same with the broadband equipment installations, you know, we have like, I think we have scheduled about 40 equipment installation upgrades in December. You know, our resources are tight with contractors and employees, so we're trying to have them work as much as they can. So we had to order the equipment, we had to wait for the equipment to come in, and now we're scheduling, we've already have a schedule for the installations, and we use the December 30th date as the date that the funds would be incurred, because the services would be, the improvements would be in service, quote unquote, in service. So, like I said, for, even for the broadband, we've ordered all the equipment already, you know, it's just one of those things where we use the December 30th date. So we're going to be in a world of hurt if, if we don't, you know, if the date of December 15th is, you know, is intact, because we use the same understanding, you know, from the Office of Controller, that the funds had to be incurred by December 30th, meaning that they have to be in service. And then, you know, for example, with the reporting, a lot of the invoices for the, for the contractors, or even our internal invoices, you know, it takes time to get those in process. So a lot of times, you know, even now, we won't even, we're just getting in October's invoices, so it takes it some time for these guys, especially because they're working, the contractors and employees are working around the clock, that they're just trying to get the work done. We're trying to get the work complete, the, you know, the funds incurred, meaning that the projects are in service, and then now we're worrying about the invoicing. And I understand the cash management, you know, you know, from OOC, but, you know, NTUA, you know, like I said before, we're going through the process right now of looking at what funds we will, we plan on reverting. I can give you an idea right now, we're planning on reverting around, you know, 17 million on the electric projects, and then maybe a few million from the water projects. But for the broadband projects, we anticipate on spending all the dollars. So that's kind of where we're at. If, you know, and this is all based off of the December 30th date. If we're using December 15th date, we'll be reverting back a lot more dollars, and then we'll be paying for a lot of these projects out of pocket if they're not CARES Act eligible, since they're not, the funds weren't incurred by the right date. So, you know, those are the concerns for NTUA, and, you know, we're trying to, you know, we use the December 15th date of incurring funds, but if, you know, if it changes or, you know, if something, if that's not the right interpretation, then we just, we'll have to, I don't know, we'll have to talk further. But, you know, our crews are working around the clock, we're, you know, not stopping right now, but if, you know, if this is the case, then, you know, we'll be losing out on some of these projects and they won't be completed. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Controller, do you have a response to this, from Vice Chair Smith?
I'm not sure, other than if I'm going to sound like I'm repeating myself, but essentially, we're just going by the legislation and the legislation is pretty clear on what it says. Expenditures have to be incurred, and then also that the unexpended of those encumbrances will have to revert to the hardship, so potentially, any goods and services that were not received. And then, you know, I think back then, I had to, this was debated on the floor, I, you know, I know I talked about all these agreements and contracts and what it means when we're in mid-project or et cetera. So, and then the other concern I had was, as you can imagine, it's, our office just doesn't push a button, and I get numbers, I can, but sometimes there's timing to these things. So that's some of the other thing I brought back is, we're essentially moving that December 30th to the 15th, and then our office is charged with essentially doing a soft closeout of the CARES financials in order to figure out what gets reverted into the CARES, to the hardship. And however long that takes, I don't know, because people are asking me, when will the hardship payments be made? So it is quite going to be an exercise, and here are all the consequences that happen. You know, I'm glad NTUA is going through the motions, but I don't know if there's any legislative fix for these situations, but, you know, I'm not leadership, so we're just going by what was passed and what it means in regard, regarding, you know, the literal interpretation of these laws that were passed. So I just wanted to add that on, I mean, unless there's other questions that I missed, so let me know.
Okay, thank you for that. Committee members, any further questions or comments regarding this report?
Thank you, Chair, this is Vice Chair Smith, real quick, one last question. This question goes to Legislative Council, I don't know if Legislative Council is on board with us. Listening in?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Based off the fact that what was said was going off the legislation, and I know that I keep saying, let's not lose this money. Would there be an amendment to these projects that NTUA is wanting to complete and make sure that it does happen by December 30th rather than putting a timeframe on December 15th? Could we, or could one of the delegates, amendment, would be on NTUA's projects for our people out there that need COVID-19 services? This is the reason why they sent this money out, CARES Act funding by the US Treasury? That's my question to Legislative Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith. The short answer is yes, a, I'm not sure if it would be the CN 8920 or NADI, or the NABI resolution that would be amended, but either could be done. But I do have a question for NTUA. And that question to NTUA would be, if NTUA has until December 30th, what's going to happen on December 31st when it turns out that NTUA did not get these projects or all of them completed? That will be too late of a time to reverse the dollars to hardship assistance. The time will be, will be gone. So at what point in time is NTUA going to be able to provide, to return the unallocated funds? December 30th is too late to get the dollars into the hardship. So that would, that would be a question I needed, need answered before drafting any legislation. I'm also going to recommend that if you are going to extend NTUA's deadline to December 30th, that you also extend the deadline, I believe, for NECA, and, sorry, my mind went just blank, if another enterprise is also doing projects. Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Smith, hopefully that satisfied your question?
Well, thank you, Chair Henio. I guess that question would be to NTUA, and what Legislative Council had mentioned, December 30th and the next day it's not completed, that's way too late, so NTUA, maybe they can think of a certain timeframe, maybe December 57th, at least maybe a couple of days before, I don't know, to ensure that these projects will be done, and if there's any reversion that needs to be done, and that would give them ample time to collect that money and send it back to the US Treasury, which I think I, I understand. Yeah, no, thank you, Chair.
And any further questions or comments, committee members?
Somebody, can you meet your phone, you're, okay, here you shuffling papers around.
Summer Gate.
Wait, Summer Gate.
I think, again, I found it back on the, I'm, again, I know, I got, I got two chapters, chapters that contacted me this morning again, that they say that the portal was broken down on the, the night, the 18th, 11, 18th, I don't know, so, when we got back on, the From the 30th to 20th, is that it? Is it cutting off the whole chapter, the 90 million dollars does include that? I don't, my next question is, I think I heard, I mentioned that before too, December 15th, we have some contractors in the dock, they're beginning to apply, so you go in there and order, you send, order, you cannot get it, you cannot get it at, or loans, you have to be live for about two weeks, materials like that, so the thing that we did wrong, I say we did wrong, we didn't know anything about that before, we gave the money to NTUA and NECA. Right now, NECA is so stinking with that money, they just give one bathroom addition to these contractors, these contractors are willing to do, ready to, they're ready to run with it, they can, they can run the bathroom addition with, almost half of it, but they want it, they want it more, give us more so we can schedule accordingly, so, no. They go to one place, they go over there eight hours, then they come back, these contractors don't work like that.
Most of those are just on the financial end to make sure we're in compliance. Um, so, um, those are the things, I'm not sure if I answered all your questions. Let me know if I didn't. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that response. Uh, committee members, any other questions or comments, uh, before I call for the question? I'm receiving the report.
Sure.
Uh, go ahead, Shana.
Sir, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think the dot com chapter and certified chapters, I'm gonna include in Gristit and Pisto. Um, they make their, they're working on their portal. And they, oh, I don't know, but Jack, we like it, he goes, we're doing it for a long time. So, they, although, are they still gonna be have a balance on it? Or is it just gone to, into hardship? I don't, I think there's some that are already working on it again. Like I said, something happened quite a bit. The, the, the portal, we don't know, it's a lead, I know. But, but then you said that, um, that deadline is a twenty, so it should be already in there.
Uh, able to chime in on this is that the CARES funds can only be used for expenses incurred in between March first and December thirtieth. Uh, as so if solar equipment is installed, but there are monthly costs to that equipment, that after December thirtieth, it will be the re- you cannot use CARES funds to pay for those costs. Um, so that that is the answer that I have to that. Uh, perhaps NQ A or the controller would like to expound. Thank you.
Uh, NQ A, do you have a response to that question?
Yeah, I can I can respond a little bit to it. Yeah, I mean, what Dana said is, you know, i- is how we understand it, that we can't use, um, you know, any CARES Act funds past December thirtieth. Um, you know, just like if we connect the customer to the to electric grid, you know, that's from our understanding, that's what the, um, what we can use for the care, you know, that's what the CARES Act eligible. We can connect the customer to the electric grid, or we can provide them a solar unit or a water line or, um, you know, those types of services. But anything after December thirty first, you know, the O and M cost, the monthly, you know, utility bills, um, you know, that that was not CARES Act eligible, um, after December thirtieth. So that's how we, um, you know, that's how we've come to, you know, the fees that you're talking about. It's really O and M, operation maintenance after, you know, the unit's installed. So it's just similar to, you know, when a customer gets electricity off of the line. Um, you know, a lot of that's, um, the operation maintenance and, you know, the cost of the power. But that's part of, it's almost like, you know, we're not charging extra fees, um, to the solar units. It's the same as, you know, the, um, you know, your your monthly utility bill. And, you know, within TUA and and all utilities, you know, the best, the best service on electric side really is to be connected to the electric grid. You have, you know, more of a reliable source. Um, you can, you know, heat your water longer. You can, you know, use other appliances and whatnot. The electric, I mean, the solar units, we were trying to focus on homes that were over a mile from any power line. And therefore, we didn't have any types of plans to serve them in the foreseeable future. So, you know, we're trying to get, um, those, we're trying to focus those solar units on homes that are farther away from power lines, because we really prefer to have a customer get, um, connected directly to the electric grid, 'cause it's, you know, it's a better service and quite frankly, it's also cheaper, um, overall. So the operation maintenance is cheaper as well. So, you know, that's, um, you know, w- we're using the funds to actually get the units, um, you know, that to do the site work, the trenching, um, the house wiring, and then to purchase the units from a vendor and then getting them installed and in service. Um, but the the fees are a monthly fee, you know, for the O and M and for any replacement of, you know, for example, if the batteries die, um, NTU is responsible for replacing the batteries. If the unit is damaged, um, through no fault of the homeowner, we have to fix it. Um, do mo- you know, normal, um, operation maintenance of the unit, um, fix the inverters. We're responsible, NTU is responsible for all of that, um, to make sure the unit is running the right way. So I hope that kind of answers the question, but we can't use the funds past the December thirtieth date for those units. Thank you.
With that, our response, thank you. Uh, back to the committee, if there's no other questions, we need to move on. We have an executive session that's still on the books. Uh, that'll take some generate some discussion, too. They'll call for the questions. Uh, should I delegate Jimmy Yellowhair?
I vote for green.
Okay, Vice Chair Smith? Vice Chair Smith? Yeah, I don't see a delegate Amber Cotty.
I doubt for Ms. Cotty will vote green. Thank you.
I don't see a delegate Nathaniel Brown?
In the meeting now.
Delegate Brown votes green.
In the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
I don't see a delegate Elmer P B Gay.
I vote red.
Okay, with that, we have four in favor, uh, one opposed, chair not voting. Uh, thank you for the report, um, as Controller Kirk, Ado and your staff. Also, Arash, uh, NTU A, then just, um, this, so committee members. Next item on our agenda is an executive session item, uh, to with our, uh, office of legislative council, uh, to discuss the, uh, important, any clients matter that has, uh, surfaced. Uh, per an email that was, uh, given to us, uh, last evening, but then getting sent out again by budget finance committee members. So with that, uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Oh, motion.
Motion by delegate Amber Cotty. Uh, is there a second?
Yellowhair.
Uh, second by delegate Jimmy Yellowhair, uh, second is this. So with this, uh, Dana, are you still on the line with us?
Yes, I am.
Uh, how much time do you think we'll need, uh, discussing this, uh, memo that you, uh, email that you wrote?
Uh, I would, I, it'll all depend on your questions, but, uh, I can summarize the memo and such. Uh, it that won't take me more than fifteen minutes, uh, depending on your questions. I guess I would say forty-five minutes.
Okay, with that, uh, delegate Amber Cotty, forty-five minutes?
Um, interesting. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, uh, delegate Yellowhair, forty-five minutes, good? And I believe, so I don't get Yellowhair, are you still on the line?
I vote, I vote green.
I mean, uh, forty-five minutes, forty-five minutes.
Biga.
I see that with that. I believe we were given a, um, executive session line by Byron Shorty at twelve oh one. It was emailed to all the committee members. So I utilized that number to call in, uh, for executive session. So all that for the questions, call for the questions. Should I delegate Yellowhair? How do you vote on the executive session for forty-five minutes?
I vote green.
Uh, Vice Chair Smith?
Green.
Yeah, I don't see a delegate Amber Cotty.
Amber Cotty votes green.
I don't see a delegate Nathaniel Brown?
Uh, delegate Brown votes green.
Yeah, I don't see a delegate Elmer P B Gay. Okay, so we have five in favor, zero opposed, uh, chair not voting. We are hereby in executive session. It is three thirty PM right now. We'll reconvene at four fifteen, uh, PM. So with this, we are in executive session and utilize numbers that were emailed to us, committee members. Be in a couple of minutes.
Mr. Chair, this is Mel. Mr. Chair?
Vice Chair is here.